Would you all please rise if you're able for a moment of silence? Thank you. We'll now call the meeting to order. And in this study session, we are going to take a look at an update on our high school academies. This is an effort to increase graduation rates, academic proficiency and preparation for college, career and community. Our high school teams have developed an academy model that increases post-secondary success. The academy model, formally called pathways, includes intentionally designed courses and learning experiences that lead to the MPS Graduation Plus Model. We've received some emails and calls from folks who have questions on the academies. So I'm glad that we've got this opportunity with our personnel to give us more information. And I know that Dr. Forrest will now introduce the topic and she'll be joined by a leadership team and many of our folks from our district schools who will provide essential information on the college and career academies. Dr. Forrest.
Thank you very much, Madam President, members of the governing board. We have an amazing team with us this evening that has been working very hard for quite some time to develop what they are going to share with you. They've gone through many iterations. They have engaged our community, talked to parents and teachers and staff and are constantly making changes to ensure that instruction is very relevant and prepares our students for college, career and community. Dr. Mallorwine is going to kick this off and get us started. He's got the clicker. We're going to point it towards the back and I think we're going to be in great shape and we've got a great team. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Dr. Forrest. Madam President, members of the governing board, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight about our college and career academies that we've, we've launched in some pilot form and we're looking to expand. This is an effort, I'm going to, I'm going to get this right, I promise. Okay. This is an effort that expands throughout a whole lot of different departments and has been ongoing for years. I was lucky enough to be able to join Mesa Public Schools about five and a quarter years ago. And we were kind of wrapping up our Portrait of a Graduate development where thousands of stakeholders came together and gave us feedback, business leaders, teachers, parents, community members, students, and gave us feedback of what, what Mesa Public Schools should aspire to produce in a, in a high school graduate and, and a student that goes through our system. And so from there, we went on a bit of a discovery on how do we get there? I remember when I got here, I looked at how like creative thinker, problem solver, critical thinker, collaborator. And I thought, oh, how do we do this? How do we do this in the same model that we, that I've, I've known for my whole career? And what the answer was is we can't. We have to redesign high school and we went on a journey. And what I'm proud to be a part of tonight and what I'll frame out for you guys a little bit is who you're going to hear from is you're going to hear from a team, a team of, a team, a, a team of diverse expertise that has come together over the course of a few years. We've gone out on discovery missions around different, different places throughout the United States to learn what effective models are happening and where, and then to bring them back here and make them Mesa Public Schools. Because just because something works somewhere else doesn't mean it's right for our community. So we engage members of our community, members of our leadership team to bring them back, to bring this back and kind of make it Mesa Public Schools. And so I would like to thank the high school team that's here tonight. I'd like to thank the members of teaching and learning because this is not just a one person or two person effort. This is really, this is absolutely dozens of Mesa Public Schools, people that care about the future of Mesa Public Schools. But I would, I would take it further and say, this is a group of people that care about the future of the city of Mesa. We have a great responsibility to the city of Mesa. And I've said this a number of times, but I think it's pertinent tonight that we have Dobson and Westwood that, that sit in the far west and we scan, we scan the whole city all the way to, to out on Crimson where Skyline is. And we produce 4,500 roughly human beings into the workforce every year. And some of them go to college and some of them go to career, but they all go to community. And we want to strengthen our community by producing human beings that are ready for our community. And that is ready for career, ready for college. And that is what our college and career academies are focused on. And so as we, as we started moving through this, I'd like to, I'd like to just frame it out, this is, this is really second order change. This is adaptive change. It's not technical change. It's not implementing like a, a new, a new adoption of resources. This, this isn't even like implementing weapons detection. There's a clear way to do it. You do it, you execute it. That's technical change. This is adaptive change and this is higher level thinking and it takes a team. It takes a group of people that understand all aspects of education. That's why we have an expert in instructional design. That's we have a CT expert. That's why we got the leadership team in the room and they all have their own expertise. And then, you know, I'm, I'm lucky enough to, my expertise is leadership and team building. And that's where I come in here. And that's why I'm not going to share all the details of this because we have experts and they put a lot more time into these details. But what we know, what we know is that our community aspires to their children and, and the families to have choice. And we want, we want our families, we want to support our parent rights and we want to support our family's right to choose different aspects of their, of their child's high school plan and also junior high. But this is really about high school. And so I just wanted to, I just wanted to thank everybody for being here. And what we've learned recently is we've gone through the, the master planning, we've gone through the master planning process at Red Mountain. And we've gone through that master planning process, the skyline, we're hearing the same thing. Our parents want kids that can critically think. They want parent, kids that can problem solve. They want kids that are, that have the opportunity to go into STEM fields. They want children that can have opportunity to go into CDE. But they also want children that have opportunities for arts and athletics and some of their own personal interests. And so we have worked all these things out and this is where we've come up with a plan. Tonight, we're going to talk about our plan for our college and career academies. So today was interesting. We had a teaching and learning meeting and doing some research and I'm going to cite two places because I can't remember where the research, it was either out of Georgetown's Center for Educational Workforce or it came out of the new teacher project. But, but here's the data I want to share with you. Out of students that, that have strong educational outcomes, only 58% of them are able to earn a living wage by the time, by they get to their thirties. And that's the students that have strong educational outcomes. Out of students that have weak educational outcomes, only 21% of them, according to this data, can, can make a living wage by the time they enter their thirties. And for our middle class and upper class families who we know have a, have a clearer path to this, only 63% of those, those students are able to make a livable wage by 30. And so when we started talking to, to industry and business and, and all the Honeywells, Empire Cats, Boeing, Able Electron, we talked to them, what did they, what do they say they want? They want us to produce graduates that can take over these high wage, high demand jobs. And I think we owe it to our community to graduate 100% of our graduates able to make a living wage. Not 63 or 70%, I think we want to produce 100% of our graduates to, to, to make a living wage. And this is a plan that I think not only is going to set the tone for what the future of high school should be in our country, is going to, is going to be a financial stability and backbone for the city of Mesa. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to my teammates who, who definitely outwork me and outthink me on this effort and, and I couldn't be, I couldn't be more humbled to work with them. I'm going to turn this over to Jen Eccles at this time. Jen, point at the screen.
Well, good evening. Thank you for having us here to share a little bit more about our college and career academies. We're very excited about this and I want to take just a moment and talk about some of the work that's gone into us thinking about this. As Dr. Mallorwine alluded, it really started with that Portrait of a Graduate when we heard loud and clear from our community that we needed to be equipping our, our learners with some different skills when they graduated to be ready for college, career and community. And that was back in 2019 and it set us down a road of research. So what is it that we need to do to get our graduates to those competencies that are defined by our Portrait of a Graduate? So we started doing some research and we started, after we did some research, we started going on some school visits and we saw some things we liked and maybe things we didn't love. And we came back and we started talking to students and to teachers and to other leaders about what we were learning. And sometimes that sent us back into that research spiral again. So this was not a, a linear process. It was years of going out and learning and coming back and engaging with our community until we kind of started landing on a model that we thought would work here in Mesa, taking the best of the best. And one thing I know about this team of people sitting here is that we all live by a continuous improvement ethic. And so it would be easy, it would be nice to say that we're going to get the model and we're done, but I know we won't because we will always be looking to make it better and to do the right thing for our learners. So what does this have to do with Graduation Plus? Well, obviously we, we all know how important Graduation Plus is to our district because we really want to make sure that our kids are leaving us with not just robust academic skills, but technical skills and employability skills that will serve them well throughout their lives, in their post-secondary education, in their careers and in their community. And so the academy model is a way that helps us achieve those Graduation Plus outcomes for all of our learners. It is a program of study that connects career-connected learning experiences that brings in work-based learning experiences and it helps focus the learning. But we are not about trying to force a career for our kids. That's not the goal of what we're trying to do here. We're trying to expose them to some different things. I had the opportunity to go to a conference last week and I was listening to a lot of college admissions people talking about the state of affairs in higher education. And we know that there's a lot of careers, all of, almost all of our high wage, high demand careers need some sort of post-secondary education to be attainable for our learners. But in particular, college, university going, rates are down and that's a national trend. That's not specific to Mesa Public Schools. So college-going rates are down after high school and persistent rates and persistence rates in college for those kids who are going to university are also down. So we have fewer kids attempting university out of high school. Of the kids that are going to university out of high school, fewer are persisting all the way to graduation. And out of all of those kids, out of every, for, out of five graduates, only two are landing in a job connected to their career. And I heard that data and it really struck me that we are on to something here in Mesa Public Schools because we want kids to go into the right post-secondary setting after high school. We want them to persist and we know that they're going to feel confident doing that because we're going to focus on that early college credit in our Graduation Plus Model and so that they can leave high school and go right into the next pathway for them. And now I think we're going to watch a little video and I think somebody's going to start it for me.
In today's fast-paced world, students are eager for real-world, relevant experiences that will prepare them for life beyond high school. Mesa Public Schools has teamed up with workforce development partners and business and industry to bring together educators, employers and community leaders to develop a fresh and innovative approach to high school education. To ensure every student achieves Graduation Plus outcomes, MPS High Schools will link classroom learning with future career paths, making education more meaningful and empowering students with the skills they need to be prepared for college, careers and their communities. We call this transformation, the College and Career Academies of Mesa Public Schools. The College and Career Academies provide students with themed courses of study like healthcare, business and entrepreneurship, and engineering and design. While students still take core subjects such as math, English, science and social studies, these subjects are taught through the lens of their chosen academy focus. Ninth graders begin in the freshman academy where they explore various careers, build life skills like financial literacy and connect with employers and colleges. After freshman year, students choose an academy to follow throughout high school. Each academy provides broader career-themed learning experiences that connect students to high wage, high demand career options. These smaller learning communities foster a sense of belonging and wellbeing, creating strong connections between teachers and students. Regardless of which academy a student selects, their courses will connect to real-world challenges faced by actual companies. Academies will offer opportunities for work-based learning experiences such as job shadowing and internships with companies like Empire Cat, Honeywell, Robert Horn Auto, McCarthy and Mayo Clinic, giving students hands-on experiences, a broader understanding of career options and enhanced technical and employability skills. By aligning education with students' interests, we make school more engaging, which in turn raises achievement, attendance, graduation rates and college enrollment. The academies assure every student graduates with the option to pursue college or other post-secondary training or step into a sustainable career with room for growth. As part of our commitment, Mesa Public Schools ensures every student is known by name, supported by their strengths and prepared for the future. The College and Career Academies of Mesa Public Schools bring that promise to life, delivering a well-rounded and meaningful education that empowers each learner.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Marlo Loria. For those that don't know me, Director of CTE and Innovative Partnerships. It's my pleasure to be here to, to talk about the structure. We've kind of had the history. This has been years in the making, really aligning it to workforce needs, but also students' interests, but also focusing on how are we changing and shifting our high school model to meet this college and career academy focus? You know, one of the things is, is and I've been in education as many people here for a very long time and there's always these great innovative ideas, but we try to do those innovations within the system that exists and then they, they tend to not work. And so in this process, we've really redesigned the structure of how the school, particularly starting with the high school, will be to create the conditions for this type of work, collaboration and academies to happen. So as the video explained, there is this idea that we really want students to have an opportunity to explore careers and life skills. We've heard from our parents specifically, please, our freshmen really need to know financial literacy. There needs to be some embedding of life skills as they explore life after high school. And so our freshman academies really is about that small cohort or that team of students working with a shared teachers where they can feel that sense of belonging and also be able to learn through those lenses of career exploration. From there, there, each high school is going to be, has developed different academy themes. I'm going to go in those in just a minute. But in those academy themes, they will again continue that teaming. One of the things that we have heard from our students and our parents is they actually like being on the team. They like having students that they know through several different of their courses. They like having those same teachers. And many students will say, well, where team am I going to be on in 10th grade? And until now, we really didn't have an answer to that. So kids will be able to prior, you know, choose or pick top three academies they want to go into based on their interest. And then in that academy, that cohort continues. And that is really where that instructional shift starts to happen. It's really the heart. And by designing our high schools in this capacity, again, we're creating the conditions for this work to happen. We're not asking teachers
We're not asking teachers to do this work in the old model of how we've done education since I went to school and graduated in 95, and I would say when my great-grandmother went to school in the 1920s. We're redesigning the experiences and the place where learning happens so that this can happen. There we go. So as I had said, there are academy themes. And what's been such great about the team behind me and the principals and their administrators and their teachers is they've all gone through this journey kind of on their own. I mean, collaborating, but really digging deep into what are those interests of their students, pairing it with also what are those workforce opportunities? Because we want to be able to bring businesses in to collaborate and work with us, because at the end of the day, when they leave us, they have to be able to go into some kind of job, whether that be through college or directly into the workforce, so they can become economically independent and contribute to our community. And so the principals, through their own design teams, really all came up with these five very common academy themes. We have engineering, design, and production, the health and medical sciences academy, entrepreneurship and business, multimedia, and public service. As you've noticed, these are very broad. There are lots of careers that are embedded in each one of these academies. So to Jen's point earlier, this isn't about kids picking a career. This is about now the learning that's gonna happen through this theme of this academy, and how can we start answering that age-old question that kids ask, why do I need to learn this, especially if I can get the answer on my phone, right? And so it's the why. And I have, well, I just had one graduate, and I had to answer that quite a bit. And sometimes I didn't know what the answer is. Just do it, right? Just be compliant, get your work done, let's not care about the why right now. But how much more engaging of an experience that is when teachers can collaborate and coordinate with each other and have that learning through this academy lens? I'm not very good at it. There we go. So structurally, what does this look like on a campus? So this is an example of Mountain View High School, who's put together what we call a program of study, which is kind of edgy speak, right? But it's really, you know, if I'm a parent or I'm a student, what does this look like for my student? Now, mind you, this is built off of a block schedule, where students have the opportunity to choose eight different courses within their program. And we'll get into the block scheduling kind of framework in just a minute. But really, it's about these cohorting classes together. And there might be three classes, there might be four classes, but that's really that academy cohort, where those teachers are working together to design learning experiences through the lens of this academy theme. And through that academy core, then we also embed other opportunities like work-based learning experiences, maybe project-based learning inquiry, all those wonderful strategies to engage students will be through this, again, lens of that academy theme. It also gives an opportunity for pathway electives if they so choose. So maybe they want to take an elective that complements. So for example, this is the Activate Academy, which is really aligned to our Public Service Academy. And students in this academy will take Changemakers as their academy core course, but then they might want to go into our Education Professions Program, because they're really interested in being a teacher. And being a teacher is part of public service. So they would have those opportunities to take those additional courses as well. And then if you look to the right, we've also aligned all of our academies to opportunities with EBIT. Many students and parents have shared concerns that, given our current model of a six-period day, there is an opportunity to go to EBIT. And so if they're in the healthcare academy and they really want to get into a nursing program, which is very competitive, there are not a lot of nursing programs out there, but for our kids to get that leg up, going in a healthcare academy, earning some certificates, and then getting into a CNA program at EBIT would give them a leg up as compared to other students who wouldn't have that opportunity. And also post-secondary options, AP, dual enrollment, IB, whatever that additional coursework they need, they would have opportunity for that within this academy structure. I'd like to introduce Dawn Giles. She works as kind of our business development coordinator and helps support our CTE career coaches. And one of the big things that really, again, makes our model unique is the amazing partnerships we have to also support these academies.
Thank you. I'm really excited to be here, and I have to tell you, I'm kind of wearing two hats tonight. As a district employee, I love my job as the community outreach coordinator for the CTE program. These are some of the businesses that I work with, and we are always trying to get more business partners, because the whole pathways program is kind of dependent on having more work-based learning experiences. These business partners work with us as guest speakers in ninth grade. They come to our career fairs in ninth grade, 10th and 11th grade. We're taking them out to businesses and showing them job shadowing, what's a day in the life like? If you want this career, what does it mean? Because so many times, they don't know what they don't know until they see it. Until they see a job in action, it doesn't mean anything. I could tell you story after story, but one quick story is I took some welding students to a welding shop, a super cool place. They were really excited. The guy gave them a hat. It was, everything was going great. They got to talk to the workers, they got to see really neat things being built. Then I just kind of casually say to the owner, who's a college graduate and a very good businessman, I say, hey, tell me, how often are you using math? And he said, every day, man, every day. I gotta have, he says, you have to pass Algebra II to do this job. So I get back in the van with all the welders, who are like, oh, Algebra II, you know? And I'm like, you guys, you gotta do it. You can do it. Look at the fun. So it just makes school more relevant when they can see it in action. And so that's what I love about my job. And then by senior year, we have a lot of students that have taken some coursework to prepare them. They might have a certification or two. Then I'm working with these companies. We have, I counted today, we have 183 business partners. And I'm working with a lot of them to get a paid internship, where the student is getting class credit for working and getting, that's where they're developing all the soft skills that we love in Portrait of a Graduate. There's some interns working in our office right now, and they are learning to clock in and clock out, and all the good things, and how to write a proper email and how to communicate with me. And it's just really valuable experience. So love the work, love the pathways. And then I'm gonna tell you the second hat that I'm wearing, that I don't know they were prepared for me to talk about, is as a Mountain View parent of five. Is when I first heard about the program, I was like, oh, okay, maybe it's kind of good that my kids are graduated. But man, I wish they could have had these experiences. And the more I talk about them with my kids, they say, we did high school wrong. You know, we missed out on a lot of opportunities, because we started our kids in seventh grade taking Spanish or math or whatever they could. We did summer school, we did A-hours, we did everything we could to fit in all the classes that they just needed to graduate and get into college with. And then what they wanted to take was auto. And I was like, sorry, you can't fit auto in. But this new schedule allows that opportunity. And so I am super excited and totally understand the point of the academy core class. And so I think that was the hangup that a lot of my friends and my daughters and everyone has, is why are you forcing kids to take an extra class? Because that's where the projects happen. That's where the learning happens. That's where all the work-based learning activities will take place. And I think it's a super valuable thing, and I'm 100% behind this, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you.
All right. I think a lot of what's on this slide has already been shared, but I just want to touch on a couple of things. This is kind of showing what the learning experience is going to look like throughout the nine through 12 high school experience. And of course, we're a school district, so our core business is learning. So it's really important that we have high-quality learning experiences in our classroom, grounded in the Arizona academic standards. And that will still be true in this college and career academy model. And when you look at the information on this slide, you can see they start out that ninth grade year with their freshman team, preparing themselves to select into an academy, and they're gonna learn through the lens in that academy in their 10th, 11th, and 12th grade year. But that 12th grade year gets a little bit more flexible, not co-horted anymore, more opportunities for work-based learning, for internships, for early college credit, for capstone projects, maybe going on to EBIT if that's not something that they've experienced before. So you can see that really prioritizing a high-quality learning experience all the way through. And I also want to say that even if you're in, say, an engineering academy, you still might learn Shakespeare, because we're not abandoning all of the things that are still important in traditional education. And when we talk about deeper and personalized learning, this is where that comes into play, because we still want students who have interests and passions, aside from what career they're thinking about, to explore those things in an academic setting as well. Okay, so the elephant in the room is around losing access to elective classes or some opportunities. So we wanted to show you a little bit about what this looks like. So you know that we're shifting to a block schedule as we move into these college and career academies. And that's happening for a couple of reasons. And one of them is that really cohorting those learners, it becomes a numbers game, and we won't go into all the details of master scheduling, but it's really a beast of a process. And so going to the block schedule increased opportunities for cohorting our learners and also access to coursework. And it also creates opportunities for educators to have some common planning time to create these experiences, so they're not doing a lot of this outside of their school day. So now I'm wishing that we didn't do this click-by-click with this mouse, but what I'm about to show you is that this is a sample schedule for a student athlete who's a sophomore. And you can see the top line is what schedule might look like in a typical six-period day. And you can see that with everything that they're required to take, their electives get eaten up pretty quickly. But now look what happens when that same student is in an eight-period block schedule. It's now given them more opportunities to explore the kinds of things they want in their electives. And then we can look at a second example. This is, say, a performing arts student, and you can see there's those required core classes their 11th grade year. And then if they take a world language and their choir, their day is done, unless they go into summer school or take an A-hour. But then when you think about that in an eight-period day, now they've got their world language, they've got their choir, and then they can take another elective class if they want to. So I just want to put it out there that this block schedule is absolutely increasing access to electives and other opportunities for our learners. And, okay. This is another great graphic that Mountain View created, and I really liked it. I took it and I tweaked it just a little bit. But when I really think about what we're doing with this college and career academy model, it's we're trying to live into our promise and meet our promise for all of our learners. And so academies are giving students a lot of choice and agency in the way they experience school. And again, more opportunities, and more opportunities not just for electives, but for early college credit, opportunities to go to EBIT, opportunities for our students to engage with the community. And that might be through work, it might be through some volunteer work or service learning. And then again, that exposure to a lot of different fields of study, so that they can start weeding out what they want to do. And I remember back in the day, you could go on to college. I know when I graduated high school and went into college, I didn't have to declare a major during my freshman year, and that is not the case anymore. Our learners have to know by the time they start college what their major is going to be, and they have to have taken the prerequisite coursework to make them eligible to apply for those colleges. And so really getting our kids dialed in about what's gonna happen for them after high school. All right. And then one last thing from me, and then I will be done talking tonight. But this is not just a high school experience, this is a pre-K through 12 experience for our learners. And so in order for our kids to really pick an academy by the midpoint of their freshman year, there has to be a lot of career awareness and exploration that's happening along the way. So we have a college, career, and community readiness framework that really supports all grade levels and understanding of what kinds of experiences do we need to expose our learners to throughout that pre-K through 12 continuum? And this is a great tool for our K-8 schools to engage with and start thinking about what kinds of things can they bring to their schools? How might they leverage some of our community and business partners, have career fairs, other kinds of opportunities for our learners to be ready to select that academy when they get to high school? And I am now gonna turn it over to the people you really want to hear from, and that's some of our school leaders to talk about what's happening out in their schools.
All right. Thank you, governing board, President Hutchinson, members of the board, Dr. Forless, for allowing me to speak tonight about our experience so far with our pathways at Westwood High School. And as a true constructivist, I couldn't do it without some type of a manipulative, because I wanted to bring in something that is part of our deeper and personalized learning story. We have the Health and Human Services Academy at Westwood High School. The academy core class is Intro to Biomed. So what does that mean? What are they doing in there? They're exploring, they're doing project-based learning. But I talked to Ms. Alfred, our teacher, that said, I want to give this a shot this year. I want to do it. And I said, what are you doing this week? And she says, we're doing polygraphs. Like, whoa, that sounds like a lot of fun. And if you're into crime investigations like I am, or even comedies like Meet the Parents, you know, you picture the person in the basement attached to a piece of paper, and their heart rate's there, and you gotta analyze that graph, right, to the questions. Well, we got 21st century skills here. This is our polygraph, this right here. And I'll pass this around, and I was like, this is really interesting, we work that work, you used it up. But you know, this polygraph, you know, is Bluetooth, it's connected to their laptops. They're doing two truths and a lie in the classroom, trying to figure it out, simple questions, analyzing their heart rates. Of course, you know, kids are kids, especially sophomore students. But you know, they're having a good time in there, a lot of laughter, but you know, this is the deeper and personalized learning that's going on in this class. And the kids are using technology that, you know, Mesa Public Schools, you as a governing board approves to spend, so that these students get this cutting-edge technology. And slowly, you know, what you're gonna see with these academies is that teachers are gonna get together and say, okay, Ms. Alfred, you're doing a polygraph test. And we have a world history teacher that might be on the team. They might want to debate ethical issues in the class. You might have a math teacher that's on the team, where they're gonna analyze data patterns as a result of the polygraph data sets that are there. You might have an English teacher, where they might craft narratives about truth. Physical sciences, where they explore the physics behind this Bluetooth technology, you know, and monitoring heart rates and all those things that are going on there. That, in essence, is that personalized learning, that deeper and personalized learning where the learning really sticks. Now imagine if we didn't have teams of educators working together to create these interconnected learning experiences. Instead, we're stuck in siloed classrooms, where science, math, history, and English have little overlap, and students don't see how knowledge connects. Without the collaborative efforts across subjects, students might never understand the real world, the relevance of what they're learning. Deep learning comes from breaking down these silos and allowing teams of educators to create meaningful interdisciplinary learning, experiences that resonate with students' personal goals and interests. The teachers are working together, then they're able to create a more personalized and engaging education, not just preparing them for tests, but for complex interconnected world beyond the classroom. That's what we want our students to have. But also, we have five members of the team. We also have a sixth team member. And you might hear about them, because they are our special education teacher that serves each of the teams. And they're just talking to the teachers about UDL, Universal Design for Learning. They're talking about UDT, Universal Design of Transition, because that's a big goal in our special ed, is that we want to transition our students into the community, into careers. And how does this world or this learning play for those students as they move into the UDT? And so we don't call them the special ed teacher, because we see them as instructional strategists. They know the brain, and they work with all the teachers and the planning, so that they could reach all the students through their lesson planning. And they're a valuable member of that team, so they do the UDL, they do the UDT that's with them. When they have an IEP meeting, and you have five other educators at the IEP meeting talking to the family, how do you think that family feels? And how do they feel supported in the educational system? And that's what we're starting to see this school year. Before, you'd probably get just one teacher that would show up to an IEP meeting, speak on behalf of all the other teachers. They probably don't even know each other, because, you know, camp is so big, and usually you know by content, but you don't know the cross-curricular. And they're all sitting there, and they're talking about strategies on how they could support a child. If a child is having a difficult time, they get on the phone as a team, and they talk about how they could support. That's what we're slowly starting to see with this transformation into the 10th grade. We are also working with the community on this vision. And this vision has been worked on for a long time. I was reflecting while I was sitting here. I remember when President Hutchinson, one of your first, I believe, maybe your first or second month, you came and visited me, and had the whiteboard all up there. And we were just talking about the pathways. This isn't something that has just developed in the last year. We've been talking about this since I've been there, six or seven years now. And, you know, it's just talking to people, getting their feedback. But our parent group, our CYAC, our teachers have been valuable members in this process and making sure that we are meeting the needs of our community, our teachers, and our students that are out there. And we're learning a lot from our parent group and CYAC. And I really, really appreciate this because we're going to be holding Rising Sophomore, Junior, and Senior Meetings this upcoming December to reinforce the vision and explore how to support their child's success. Each month, parents just ask those deep, meaningful questions. I mean, I leave there sometimes, you know, my collar's a little bit worn and done. But, you know, we're all working through this difficult idea of transforming schools to meet our students' needs. But we couldn't do it without our parents and those community members that are out there. And they're asking these thoughtful questions for our team to reflect on. And we want to make sure that when we go into these meetings in December, that we are honoring the groups that we've been listening to so that we can ensure we're meeting our families' needs. And I want to give an example of what we're seeing and hearing from our families. And Marla raised the issue of expanding electives, Jen as well. And while we've added more choices, there are still moments where a student may not get their first choice. And we're hearing that from our families. They might pick a pathway, and they wanted a singleton. I'll pick on advanced choir, or, you know, you could think of that advanced art class. And so working with our team, you know, we're going to be making sure that we're very clear that, what's more important to you as a family, that singleton elective or the pathway? You know, I think that would be key when it goes into our registration because we saw some, you know, struggle through that for this year is that they wanted this class, but they didn't know it would coincide with a pathway. So when we talk to families and say, I want this pathway, no matter what, everything else is secondary, or I want this elective, the pathway could be my number two or three choice. That's the things that we're going to be looking at going into this next school year's master schedule registration process. But it's also important to remember that while not every choice may be possible, we're still offering far more opportunities, as you saw that's up there, than the traditional six-period schedule. And so during this registration process, we want to make it clear that there may be times you have to make a choice. And on these forums, we'll ask the families what's more important so that we could try to honor their needs. Another strong partner in this process, and I look at Dr. O'Reilly with the ASU Helios Decision Data Center. We took a team at the end of May after, you know, you hosted the leadership team here. And we had parents, we had department chairs, we had teachers, whoever was really available in the summertime to go over there. And Dr. O'Reilly walked through the workforce development dual enrollment rates just to start spurring those conversations and seeing where we need to go as a school. So, and Dr. O'Reilly, you were on campus this past week, you know, working with our core explorations teachers about ideas about using that data in our classrooms so that students make more informed decisions. So we see the ESU Helios Data Decision Center as another partner that's out there. I also want to say that, you know, this transition is a lot of challenges also at the same time. One of our biggest challenges is, you know, she's not here today, but our AP of Registration, Sue Campbell, working on a master schedule, working on ninth-grade teams, 10th-grade teams, ELD, special ed, athletics, singleton electives, seminary classes, work-based learning, internships, athletics. A master schedule isn't the master schedule that it once was back in the 90s, where it was real clear-cut. When you're putting together things that are of teams, you know, it's a little bit more complex. So we have, you know, our synergy department has been great. You know, we have just a wealth of resources at Mesa Public Schools, and everyone's working through this really hard change of building a balanced teaming model at Westwood High School. So, and another thing I want to just mention is that we have a teaming model, and we have that traditional master schedule at the same time. But we'll slowly start to see that as we move away from that traditional master schedule and have a teaming more model, master schedule, things will get a little bit better. And I also want to say, you know, Dr. Davis with IB program, that adds a complexity, but it also enriches and it honors the IB work that's going on as well at Westwood High School. And I know Dr. Davis is engaging with his parents as well around this and having a lot of meaningful discussions about this, not only with the parents, but with educators as well, is how do we fit the IB model within this pathways conversation? Also want to recognize the hard work of Mrs. Harris here and our instructional coaches because as we unveil the 10th grade teams that are there this year, you know, our instructional coaches have been real pivotal of just holding the hands of our teachers and talking about how can we make this work? How do we do flexible schedules? How do we do this interconnected learning? How do we do teammateship? That's our big key right now. And it's probably not a word you could find in the dictionary, teammateship, but that's something that we're really exploring. How do we, as educators, work together? And that's something that you probably wouldn't see in past colleges or universities of how to work with other educators in a professional way around a certain topic or a question that we're posing to a group of students. But they're focused on that together, working with those cohorts of students. So another one that I want to say that we've had a lot of guidance from is from Krista Adams and Estrada, who just came over from ASU to work in our Secondary Learning Department to operate effectively as teams. Because again, that teammateship is really crucial for us this first school year. And we're giving them the autonomy to shape their prep time and work with each other, knowing that interdisciplinary learning holds endless possibilities. We're also seeing positive trends. Educators and students alike that I've been talking to are buying into what pathways models can offer. Students in 10th grade remain cohorted, receiving the same wraparound support they experienced in 9th grade. But now, through the lens of their chosen pathway, these students are not only learning content, they're receiving the comprehensive support they need to thrive. So they appreciate that. You know, that was a big worry at the end of their 9th grade year, is, you know, we're in this academy, but now they're going to be released into the wild again in their 10th grade year. And so there was a lot of anxiety about that. So getting them back into the small learning communities concept and learning through the lens that they're familiar with, you know, basically calm down that anxiety. Our partnerships with industry leaders have been a key part of the success. These leaders meet with our teams, they provide valuable insights. Our teachers are taking this input and using their expertise to craft learning experiences that mimic those real-world experiences. Each of the teams, back in August, met with industry experts that we invited in, and we had like a symposium, okay? Tell us about your profession. Tell us about what type of employee that you want. And the teachers were just so fantastic. They're just learning from them, asking them questions so that they could craft, use their artwork to mimic those real-world experiences that are out there. Our teams are also, they created a padlet where each of the teams came up with their vision. They're talking about what does the future look like. And on this padlet, we asked the other teachers on our campus, 11th and 12th grade teachers, reflect about what the 10th grade teachers are talking about here. Give them some feedback. Give them some questions to prompt some different ideas so that they can be prepared for this when they come into the 11th, 12th grade. So we're really trying to get the educators on our campus to really understand what teaming's all about and what these pathways look like, and getting their feedback so that the teams could grow some more. So at Westwood, we're proud to honor these voices of our educators, our students, the parents, and our business partners. It's a transformational process that, you know, gets us up in the morning, it keeps us up all night long. But, you know, it's something that gets us excited as well about the endless possibilities that we can have for our students at Westwood High School, but also throughout Mesa Public Schools. So thank you for the opportunity for letting me be here. And I know, Sangi, you have video.
I'm short, so. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. My name is Sangi Kim. I'm one of the assistant principals over at Skyline High School. I had the pleasure, actually, I think the most exciting part of sharing these stories and voices of our learners and educators. And I want to put this into context. I had the opportunity, I just took a couple days, a couple hours out of two days, and randomly went to classrooms and met with teachers during their prep and asked them, I don't think they appreciated it, but asked them, hey, would you be willing to do a video on how academies has been going for you? I also did to the students. And surprisingly, a lot of them would say, yes, let's go for it. And I shared some questions that they can answer. And most of them said, you know what, I'm good. I'm just going to answer the questions how I see is fit. So the next couple of videos that you get an opportunity to see, you're going to find some themes, themes related to what you've just been hearing in the earlier presentations, themes with our teachers, themes with the learners. And I think it's incredibly important. These are our constituents. These are the individuals we're working for. And so I really hope that what they share today with you is very telling to the work that we're trying to do with our academies.
Before we start the video, I want to remind people that are observers to please keep the conversations down and to make sure you silence your cell phones. Appreciate that. We are in a study session, and we've got important information to hear as a board. Ms. Kim, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Noe, and I'm in the Engineering Academy. The favorite part of the academy would be is the projects that we do. Because last year, we never did many of those projects. And this is really brand new to us, and it's pretty fun.
My name's Sterling, and I think that, like, the biggest thing between this year and last year is how it was kind of confusing going on to this new schedule. But once I got the hang of it, it's been really great. I get more time to my work and class, and teachers are really helpful. Overall, I think I've gotten way more work done during the day. I've been getting better rates.
You guys sit at least.
Hi, I'm Izzy.
I'm Breonna, and we're part of the Leadership Academy here at Skyline. And these different academies help you with what you want to do in your future, giving you new ideas and inspiring you.
I'm Izzy, and when I'm older, I like to work with, like, other people. And in our business class, we do that a lot with communicating and learning how to communicate, and also presenting and learning how to talk to other people in a professional way. Yeah, right.
I'm Gianna Hesselstort, and I co-teach Algebra II with Alyssa Odle.
I'm Christina Kahinowski, and I teach Algebra II and College Algebra.
In starting the academies, so our Algebra II class is in the Engineering Academy. It's really been great so far to teach things through that academy lens. When we did our icebreakers at the beginning of the year, Get to Know You, we were able to pick ones that we thought would really hit home with the students that are doing engineering. And we've been able to engineer some of our products, uh-uh, engineer some of our products so that they are also engineering-focused.
For the future, we are looking at building collaboration within our team members. And so creating a more geared project that would allow us to go through that lens. So I'm in the Health Science Academy, and so working with my group of teachers, English, history, science, math, and how we can create something that is cross-curricular. And that is our hope and our focus as we transition and grow more as a team.
Hey, my name is Jerry Jackson. I teach Biology at Skyline. And some of the biggest things or the great things that have come from the academies at Skyline is the community that has been built with, or has been built with some of our students over the past year and this year. So students are more excited to come and, like, share or build camaraderie with their team. And they're super excited to come back and talk to their teachers and ask questions. And they're really looking forward to how the academies delve into healthcare or entrepreneurship, just from joining our freshman academy before. So there's a lot of good things that can come from this and a lot of excitement that come from it as well.
Do I turn? There we go. As you can see, you know, kind of from the mouth of those that are on the ground, like boots on the ground, from a student perspective, teacher perspective, administrative perspective, this work is hard. But when you get to hear from the kids, the learners and the teachers, and see, you know, what their experience is, I think we are on that right. I don't think, I know we're on the right track. We've talked a lot about what we've done to communicate this out to our community, so I'm going to skip this for time's sake. And then just what are some of the next steps? Really, we know we need to have some aligned, consistent communication about what the academies are and what the framework is. And as Mr. Gilmore had explained, like, some of this has been kind of ongoing. And as Dr. Mallorwine said, it's been very adaptive. But I think we finally have landed on those themes, what the model is, and now how do we have some consistent communication from a district level of what's happening at the different sites. And working with, possibly getting, working with maybe a marketing firm to look at creating videos aligned to this, looking at a website. A lot of the school systems that we have seen have some dynamic websites, very interactive of where these academies lead to post-secondary career. So really, parents and students get the full, you know, version or vision of where these lead to. And then we're having schools that are going to be expanding. They're going to be adding academies next year. They're going to be doing block scheduling next year, giving them the support from a district level to how do we better support those students or the administrative teams that really have to implement this? How do we support those academy core teachers? Because, you know, being your own teacher in your own classroom and now working in a collaborative team, and where do they start making those interdisciplinary connections? We know there's some professional learning we need to provide for them. And then really finalizing those programs of study and making sure they're aligned to college and career opportunities. And that picture I just want to highlight is aligned, that was our college, not our college, that was our internship, parent, and hiring event last spring. We had standing room only, and I'm sure we were breaking all kinds of rules with having too many people in that space. But when you build it, they come. And that picture represents, we build those opportunities for our kids, they come. And their parents came with them, which sometimes is difficult to do with high school parents. And so all of this work we're doing is to ensure that all students have those opportunities to be college and career and community-ready. And I know I'm right on time, so there's not a lot of time for questions unless you want to go over, but we're here if you have any questions.
Do my colleagues have any questions at this time?
Lots. Lots.
Okay. So Ms. Davis, why don't we have you start?
Okay. First, let's hear about block. And have we seen a change in behavior with block schedule?
So Ms. Davis, that's a great question. We pulled the data, actually. Dr. Davis was sharing it with me last week, last Thursday. He looked at the Thursday of this year versus the Thursday of the previous year. And correct me if I'm wrong, the data showed that discipline from the year over with the block, we've seen a 37% decrease in discipline at Westwood High School. Is that correct, Dr. Davis? Okay. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes, she has lots.
How are we engaging parents, having teenagers that come home, and I say, how's school? What did you talk about? Good. And then they move on, right? There's no details. How are we engaging parents with these changes and educating them on how we're moving forward? So they're engaged and having these discussions about what's happening, what field they might be interested, that they can talk to their families about, all those kind of things. How are we doing that?
Any other principals who'd like to talk about it?
Courtney, I think you've just hit on the secret sauce. When you're leading change that's as bold as this is, it can't be created in a vacuum. We have to have the fingerprints of our parents, our teachers, and even our students. At our school, we have been working on this for quite some time. Over the summer, we had over 40 teachers that put in between 80 and 100 hours of building the future school that they are going to move forward with in developing these academies. We have students right now that are building out advertising and marketing campaigns and branding these academies that they're ultimately going to experience. And they're creating in graphic design the logos for each academy. And we've had a CYAC meeting. We have a town council that's coming up in October. And our plan was to move CYAC, School Improvement Advisory Council, from rubber-stamping field trips where we've never said no, to where we're blending their voices into the work that we're leading. We're fielding questions and concerns. And while we can't meet everybody's concern, we're a lot more informed. And when we ultimately launch this at Mountain View a year from now, And when we ultimately launch this at Mountain View a year from now, um, it'll be well received because it'll be a co-created effort that marries the work of our community with the work of our school. And our kids deserve nothing less.
Thank you. Are any other board members that would like to ask questions? Mrs. Walden.
So my first question, you mentioned the traditional master schedule, so you have both. So is the, is the plan that all six high schools will be on this block schedule?
President Hutchinson, members of the board, that's a good question. So right now, uh, we want to move, um, we, we really lean on our, our high school leadership teams to help us make a decision on how fast we move. That's why we have three schools that are in block this year and three, and two schools that have launched into the pathways. And, and every school is kind of on their own journey. So next year, we plan to have five schools that are in block schedule, uh, and five schools that are launching into our academies. And we're still working, uh, with Mr. Thomas at Mesa High to figure out, um, he's, he's working with his staff and his CYAC and his community, what's the right speed for them? We do have, uh, we, we do understand that we have a Franklin model out there. And that's one of the opportunities that Mr. Thomas and his team is embracing is can we create a, an academy type mo- Franklin model at Mesa High? Because we want to give an opportunity for families to pursue that type of learning, to have a place in Mesa Public Schools. So to answer your specific question, we're going to have five of six. We have Eva or Alternative High School, which will do, be doing pieces of things that are right for their kids. And then Mesa High right now, and I have another meeting, I've been meeting with Mr. Thomas, uh, I met with him two weeks ago and I'm going to meet with him, uh, Thursday. And we're, we're going to talk about, you know, what is, what is the timeline and what is the, the pathway for Mesa High? To figure out if, when we're going to get to this, this opportunity for all students at Mesa.
So my other questions, I've had, I've had some parents that, you know, they're, they're concerned because their children aren't going to have math or music every day. Or more I've heard, they're not going to have seminary every day. So I feel like we still need to have an option open for people that, for families that want to have more of that traditional scheduling. Do you have to have the block schedule though to, to use pathways? It sounds like you don't.
From all of our learning and all of our research that we've done, um, over the last, I guess probably 24 to 36 months, for a kid to ensure the type of, um, agency and choice that we want to ensure for our community, our, our community, the block schedule is pretty essential. Uh, for our, for, there's, the members of our community that need a release time every day, they had to give up something. And, uh, like one of the, one of the concerns is all was, are my kids going to be not, not able to take the number of, uh, dual enrollment or AP classes? And just on the example we showed tonight, there's 12 classes in that one example. So we're, we're giving more opportunity and more choice. So to, to kind of answer your question, the block schedule is going to be essential to assure, ensure that amount of agency and choice for our community. If we stay with a school that has a traditional schedule, it's going to have to look different.
And I just have one last question. With, if, if a student changes their pathway, will that disrupt their path to graduation if they're making changes about going in from one pathway to another?
We don't believe it, it will. The, the other, the one thing that is essential to understand it is it, it, it's a theme-based teaching through the lens of real world, um, real world connections. It's not as much like a college major. It's more of giving, what, what we have heard and what we know is kids want choice. Uh, they want real, like outside of school, real world relevancy in their learning. We have a chronic absentee problem throughout our nation and we're not going to get there with the old sticks and carrots approach. We have to tap into that intrinsic motivation, which is that seeing relevancy in the learning and have an agency. We also know from our community, from parents and our business community, that they want critical thinkers. They want kids that can think, uh, and, and, and a critical and creative problem-solving mindset. And that's where we get into our deeper personalized learning. We, we hear, we hear the school board, we want to, we want to increase achievement. Well, we know over the last 30 years, achievement has been stagnant. So we want to do something better and different to increase achievement.
I, I agree.
And so, and I, I apologize. And so, um, that's what we're, we're hearing and that's kind of the, the path we're going on.
I just, I just wanted to know, you know, we don't get in a situation where it's like college and we pigeonhole somebody to one area. And maybe, you know, after two years, they realize it's not the right area for them, but then they can't change because then they're not on track to graduate. You know, which happens a lot. People change their majors in college and it takes them longer to graduate. So I want to make sure that, you know, we're not just sticking somebody in, in a field that they, you know, they should be able to, to change their mind. Just like with electives, you can take different electives every year.
Yeah. And in our, in our, with our block schedule, our kids are going to have, be able to take more, have more opportunity to earn more credit. So we, we believe that some of the things where parents, uh, pay for summer school to take extra classes, that won't be needed. A hour, we're going to be able to eliminate that and, and so kids aren't getting up at the crack of dawn because they need more classes. We're going to have the vehicle to get our kids every credit they need to graduate. And if a child decides to move out of a path and we, we make the decision that that's something that we're not, they're not going to be short credits. They will have the credits to graduate. But I also believe that kids are, we have a goal in our, in our district to increase, uh, those, um, those AP and dual enrollment credits. We know each kid with a, with an accelerated credit, would takes one credit has, is more likely to go on and be more successful in college. So we're going to have the opportunity to increase those opportunities for all of our students as well through that model.
That's really good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Really good questions and, and, and thank you for the answers. Um, Dr. Riley, Ms. Sears. Ms. Sears.
I do want to, um, have a comment because as I listen to you in going through this, as, um, a parent who paid for a lot of A-hour classes and paid for, um, many extra things. So one of my children could go to EBIT and explore something, but still when we talk about that give up, um, this for that are not, I mean, I guess I want to put in the room what the reality is. There's always been a first choice, second choice. And I remember sitting down doing scheduling with both of my children and it wasn't like, oh, we didn't get this first choice. So the give up, I'm, um, wanting to just enter in the room that this block scheduling isn't putting us in a place that we haven't been already. In terms of we're a large school district, there's choices that needs to be made. We have the configuration, but the opportunity to have the additional, um, classes and credits and being able to pair with EBIT, I definitely appreciate that immensely because yeah, it was very difficult. Adding those, um, early morning, um, classes to my, um, children who we know are high schoolers. And it's already hard to get to school on time, period. And then adding the, um, the A-hours were, was definitely a challenge. So as I listen to this and I look at the trajectory of where we're going and what's happening, I'm always thinking about where, talking a lot about the end in mind, which is really important. And there's always a lot of energy around high school. And then in middle school, it kind of wanes and, and the, um, little kids where, oh, they're cute. And we have a whole bunch of mommy-ing and daddy-ing going on with that. But one of the things that I, um, would like to hear about more and know as we are talking about this goes throughout the system. And I saw the slide shows, um, early on, how, um, it's really, uh, great to start introducing careers early. I would actually like to see that be more robust. Like we actually have something that's a tool. Cause we know we're in 2024 and still the average, um, family is still talking about five careers. And then they talk about this nebulous computer career, whatever it might be, AI or cyber, with no context of what we're really talking about, right? Even though we know there's careers that haven't been invented yet. But having at the lower level, just really a more intentional space like we're talking about. Um, and I know we are already connecting with career partners who come in and say, oh, I do this as a job and different things like that. But actually having that be almost an instructional piece, that, that exploration is almost like a course. The same way we add into the curriculum, history or something like that. Because I think it won't be till we start broadening the mind a lot earlier with these careers that will start getting more traction for where we're trying to go. Yes, what you said is definitely true. You're behind the ball when you come to college and like, I don't know what I want to do. And it kind of puts a lot of pressure on our children to explore, even though we're saying, this is the time to explore. The time to explore is getting further and further back. So, um, you know, I'm offering kind of, um, an interest or curiosity about being really intentional, have something that's almost curriculum oriented when it comes to introducing that. And I understand we are doing a lot to help kids create, uh, critically think. But I think, uh, intentionality about that to help us. Cause I love everything that we saw and everything that, um, was introduced today.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Sears. Um, we are going to be extending those top opportunities down to our system. It's, it's truly going to be a K-12 pathway. And I appreciate you mentioning the, the choice and the agency that we're providing. There's always been choice. What we're doing now is we're alleviating, um, some of the hard choices because there's more opportunity. And, and expanding that from our K-8. And, and then at the end of ninth grade, our families with their, with their student are going to get to have all the information from years to say, okay, here's the theme that we're more interested in. And it's really going to be a collaborative effort between the student and the parents to, to make those selections. And we want to provide those, um, those informed opportunities for families and children to make, make their selections for what's best for their child.
Thank you very much. Dr. Riley?
Let me just tell you some questions I have, but I don't want the answer now because we're, we've more than run out of time. But some of the things that came to mind are, a lot of parents were asking for different things. We have to be very intentional and, and, and think about how we, we meet everyone's needs. Cause that's always been a theme of Mesa. We've offered choice and we've tried to meet parents' needs for far longer than, uh, we've had, uh, all the other choices that exist now. Um, parents might be asking, okay, that amount of time for math is less than what you showed me they're getting now. So how are they getting enough math and are they being prepared if I want my student to go to college? So those sorts of, those questions, can my student go to EBIT half a day when you have this theme? So all of those sorts of things, uh, are things that I'd like to learn more about. And I'll just leave that out, leave it at that, that, that we could learn more. And I think parents may like answers to some of those questions.
I, I appreciate your comments, Dr. Riley, because those are the questions that we are getting from parents. And, um, that, and from teachers, um, the fear that they're, they will have more students, they will have less time to teach those students. That is a great fear that is out there. Um, also, um, that kids, as, as Ms. Walden asked, that kids may be in a pathway that they have changed and don't want to be in. They were put in a pathway because of, of scheduling. Um, there are, there are a lot of questions. But as, as Dr. Oliver mentioned, um, communication is going to be key. And making sure that students, parents and the community have been informed, but also have been asked their opinions for their kids, for their community. And as I, as I heard, um, Principal Westwood say, Dr. Gilmore, he said, "We got better as we got more feedback." So this is, this cannot be just informing people, this is coming down the pipe. This has got to be a two-way communication. And that's why I love the Skyline video because it showed us the reaction of people that have experienced this. And, and that, that is the two-way. We are getting information back. So, um, there, there's a lot yet to be learned. Um, I'm hoping that this was a great first step for people who are hesitant about the change. But I think we, we understand that the change is needed. How that change is happening for our students is essential. And that making sure that people are informed but are heard along the way. And that their input has made a difference and has made an impact on the model that Mesa chooses for its students. So, um, I think we need to leave it there, um, because we are running out of time and we do have a meeting at 6:30. But I do want to thank all of you for being here and I want to thank all of you for your efforts. It is clear that the intentionality is to offer kids relevancy for their education and opportunities to explore how they want to pursue their futures. And, and, and that, I'm hoping as evidenced by the question that Ms. Davis asked about discipline. It seems that this could be the answer to absenteeism, to discipline issues. Let's hope. And higher academic achievement, which is what we should be all about. So I thank you for your many efforts. I know this is, this is huge. And I do appreciate that it has kept you up at night as well, because this is not easy stuff. So I appreciate all of you very much. And with that, we'll, um, we need to adjourn the study session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Ms. Sears has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis has seconded. Ms. Kirby, would you please take our vote?
Ms. Sears votes here.
Take it safe and stuff. Ms. Sears and Dr. Riley are in the affirmative. We have unanimously voted to adjourn the study session. Our next regular session will begin at 6:30. Thank you. Thank you.[418.75]
Meeting tonight. We are going to call the meeting to order at this time. All public comment on agenda and non-agenda items will be heard during the time specifically designated as public comment on the agenda. Any person desiring to address the board on an agenda item or during an open call to the public to address a non-agenda item must complete a request to address the board prior to the beginning of the public comments section. Requests received during or after the public comments section has begun will not be recognized. Current district students who sign up to speak at call to the public will be given priority to speak first. Please keep in mind that according to the Attorney General's, excuse me, the Arizona Attorney General's Office Guidelines and District Policy Procedure 3-503, call to the public is not an appropriate place for candidates for school board or their representatives to announce their candidacy, advocate for their election, or advocate for the defeat of their opponents. Tonight, the presentation of the colors, the pledge of allegiance, and the national anthem will be led by the Mesa High Junior ROTC, led by Brian Walker, Lieutenant Colonel, U.S. Air Force. The pledge leader is Cadet Matthew Ellington, excuse me, Effington. Color guard are Cadets Tanisha Williams, Adriana Rivera, Emily Blaine, Adrian Toscano, and Sean Fulton. Please stand if you are able for the presentation of colors, pledge of allegiance, and the national anthem.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the red hills we watched? Were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs were singing air, gave proof through the night that our star was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Thank you. You may be seated. Again, we want to thank the Mesa High Junior ROTC led by Lieutenant Colonel Brian Walker, U.S. Air Force. At this time, we will have a video on the governing board procedures that will be played and following by a statement that I will read.
Welcome to the Mesa Public Schools Governing Board Meeting. We appreciate your interest in the district. The five elected governing board members served without compensation and volunteered countless hours. The president and the clerk of the board are elected in January. Under state law, the governing board may only discuss and vote on matters that are on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Agendas are posted a minimum of 24 hours in advance on the Mesa Public Schools website and in the Curriculum Services Center. Copies of tonight's agenda are located in the lobby. The public may speak on any item of business on the agenda that the board discusses or requires the board to take action. If you wish to comment on an action or discussion item, please complete a request to address the board form before the item is discussed. The form is located in the lobby. Members of the public will be given a maximum of three minutes to speak once recognized by the governing board president. Please state your name before you speak. We ask that all speakers show respect and courtesy to others. During the second regular meeting of each month, the agenda will include a call to the public, which is an opportunity to speak to the governing board about a school district matter that is not on the agenda. Please submit a request to address the board form to participate in the call to the public. If you would like the board to consider adding an item to a future agenda, you may submit your request in writing to the board at least five working days before that meeting. The superintendent or governing board president will consider your request. Thank you for your attendance and involvement in tonight's meeting.
It is an official governing board meeting. The board has important business conduct that is essential to the operation of this district. Everyone is welcome to express ideas or concerns to the board in accordance with the agenda. The poster in the boardroom describes positive behaviors expected and behaviors that cannot be tolerated. Speak and act respectfully, please. No side conversations, no reactive comments. They are disruptive. It is the governing board president's responsibility to maintain proper order so the board can conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner. If you are disruptive or interfere with the conduct of this meeting, you will be asked to leave so the board can conduct the business of the district. At this time on our agenda, we have the review of the governing board calendar. Dr. Forless, would you please review that for us?
Thank you very much, Madam President, members of the governing board. I'm going to walk us through the month, the beginning of November. This week, September 26th, beginning at 7:30, we have a joint meeting with the city of Mesa as well as Mesa Public Schools elected officials. I know that the doors will open at 7:00 for breakfast and then the meeting will get started right at 7:30. October 7th through the 11th is fall break. Our schools will be closed and there will be limited district services. So if you'd like to make an appointment in Mesa Public Schools to visit during that time, please make sure that you call to make sure that the district office that you're seeking is open. October 15th is our next regularly scheduled board meeting that will begin at 5:00 P.M. We will have a study session on artificial intelligence in Mesa Public Schools and then our regular meeting will get started at 6:30. On October 29th, at 5:00 P.M., we will have a study session focused on grades to monitor student outcomes that are directly aligned to the governing board's goals that they have adopted related to student outcomes. And at 6:30, we will start our regular meeting. And then November 12th, 5:00 P.M., we have a study session with our student advisory group and at 6:30, we will begin our regularly scheduled meeting. That concludes my review of the upcoming calendar.
Thank you, Dr. Forless. I'd like everybody to note that because of October break, the board will be meeting on the third and fifth Tuesdays in October. That is October 15th and October 29th, as Dr. Forless said. So there's a little bit of a variation this coming month because of October break falling when we would regularly have our school board, governing board meeting. At this time, we have on our calendar, on our, excuse me, on our agenda, the superintendent's update. And again, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Andy Forless, who will provide us with an update of news, events, and celebrations around the district.
Thank you so much, Madam President, members of the board, superintendency. It's always an honor to be able to celebrate Mesa Public Schools. I'd like to start by focusing on us on our why, which is all about, went a little fast there. All about the work that we do to deliver on our Mesa Public School promise, which is to know our students by name, to serve them by strength and need so that they graduate ready for college, career, and community. We know that that takes a student-focused approach. And so you will see here our portrait of the Mesa Public School graduate. Large stakeholder engagement in 2019 helped us to identify what is it that our community wants when our kids graduate from Mesa Public Schools. So you will see here the essential attitudes and skills within our portrait of a graduate. At the bottom of this visual, you will see five strategic goals. We believe that if we ignite a culture of learning and well-being, ensure equity, align our resources, and engage our community, that we will ensure our goal of achieving college, career, and community readiness. Those five strategic goals are supported by our portrait of a graduate so that we can deliver upon our promise in Mesa Public Schools. This is a widely shared commitment across our school district and we work every day to put this into action. This year, we had three focus areas that have been developed based on feedback from stakeholders and our and our staff. Our first area of focus is on academic and instructional development. The second on community engagement and safety. And the third is organizational and operational efficiency. So I'd like to provide an update to you on things that have been happening in Mesa Public Schools in these particular areas. First, I'd like to start out with academic and instructional development. I'd like to give a big shout out to our partner Honeywell. They allowed and invited students from across Mesa Public Schools to engage in a STEM night where they were able to demonstrate their projects, engage with the community, and talk about what they are learning and how they are putting their skills into action across our schools. National Hispanic Heritage Month is observed nationwide from September 15th through October 15th. At Mesa Public Schools, we honor the rich cultures and contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans by celebrating the histories, traditions, and achievements of citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. You will see in this picture here that we have very talented folk dancers from Jefferson Elementary who were led by kindergarten teacher Rosa Linda Piedra, who performed at the multicultural fair in Heritage Park in Mesa. I mentioned that one of our focus areas is community engagement and safety. Later on in our agenda, I will provide a comprehensive update on the numerous threats that we have experienced over the last couple of weeks in Mesa Public Schools. I'd like to let you know that at Mesa Public Schools, we began weapons detection at our first junior high. We've had the implementation in our high schools since last spring, but we began the implementation at Stapley Junior High this week and the remaining junior highs will have a rollout plan beginning after fall break. Great opportunity to provide a shout out to some of our community partners. Renee Parker, who was our Director of Community Partnerships, led the recent training for our growing volunteer force with AARP Experience Core. This program continues to expand, providing critical support for early literacy. Forty volunteers completed a two-day training, gaining the skills needed to inspire a generation of readers. In addition to promoting reading fluency, the program fosters positive connections between adults and students. These dedicated volunteers serve as community educators, donating hundreds of hours to ensure students reach reading proficiency by the end of third grade. Also like to recognize National Custodian Day. Meet Teresa Navarez, a valued member of our custodial team. We are very grateful to our custodial staff for their dedication to supporting student success. They work every day to keep our schools and buildings clean, safe, and welcoming, which is essential to creating an environment where students and staff can thrive. On October 2nd, National Custodian Day is National Custodian Day. Let's take a moment to thank our custodians for the vital work that they do to ensure all students have safe and clean learning environments. And you will see lots of dates to know in October. It's a very busy month. Throughout the month of October, we will be celebrating National Principals Month, National Bullying Prevention Month. As I mentioned, October 2nd is National Custodial Day. We have fall break. October 14th through the 18th is National School Lunch Week, followed by Digital Citizenship Week, National School Bus Safety Week, Red Ribbon Week, and Make a Difference Week. So if you're looking for a time to celebrate in October, you've got lots of options. Like to thank you very much for engaging in my update on what's happening in Mesa Public Schools since our last meeting.
Thank you so much, Dr. Forless. So wonderful to see how the community has engaged itself in our, with our schools and with our students. Love the support of Chase for the STEM night and our Experience Core. Added again this year promoting literacy and making a difference with our, with our particular second graders. At this time, we have a recognition part of our program. And again, we are proud to spotlight Dobson High School and Field Elementary. And we will recognize the outstanding contributions of staff and students at both schools. Dr. Forless, would you please lead us in this recognition?
I have been looking forward to this for weeks. So, Madam President, members of the governing board, if you would like to join in front of the dais, we will get started with our spotlight recognition. I am thrilled to introduce our Spotlight Recognitions, a program that provides our community with a closer look inside Mesa Public Schools. Some of you may remember our school spotlights prior to the pandemic. One of the recommendations from our employee recognition design team was to bring them back. So here we are. Spotlight Recognitions offer a chance to find out what's inside our schools and honors the remarkable individuals and their impact on students. Starting tonight and continuing during the second board meeting of each month, school spotlights will highlight a video showcasing each school, which will also be added to the school's website. Recognition of a student, a certified staff member, and a classified staff member. This evening's spotlight recognitions include Field Elementary and Dobson High School, as President Hutchinson mentioned. So we're going to start with Field Elementary. Well, Michelle Hall, I see all the field shirts here. Well, Michelle Hall, Principal of Field Elementary, please join me at the podium while we watch a very special video about your school.
I love here because it's
It's safe.
And the teachers here are always giving you good advice and helping us learn a lot. They just love that the school is so positive.
I really like all the kids here. They're all really nice and people like conversate with them well. And the staff is welcoming. I think that they're really finding really cool. And no matter what teacher you have, you'll bond with them. So come for the teachers and the experience with people.
Here's a fun bunny benches at recess, the energy playground. There's a place where there's a bunch of seats and you can just sit down and talk to your friends.
I like hanging out at the falcon smiths. It's by the primary thing room. We do a good stuff where we put plants inside. We've cleaned it up so it looks all nice. And we take really good care of it. We planted purple flowers and stuff. And sometimes the teachers will take us there to do like projects and stuff.
It's a good school to learn like all the subjects, math, English, science, all these studies.
I like field because all the teachers are very nice. And like, they're always really happy. And they try to rewind from multiplication, subtraction, addition. And it makes you want to pay attention more. And like, it just makes you want to learn. Field is a safe school to be at. And it's a really cool place. All the teachers are so responsible and respectful to all the students and all the students are treated equally.
So without further ado, I would like for Principal Michelle Hall to be able to introduce her spotlight recognition.
So first, ooh. So first tonight, I'd like to honor Rachel Soto, a sixth grade student at Field Elementary. Rachel is a student who embodies the spirit of a falcon soaring high and lifting others along the way. For three years, Rachel has served as a dedicated class representative on student council, advocating for her peers and always striving to make our school a better place. As our Move 1 Million Ambassador, she championed health and wellness, encouraging her fellow falcons to stay active and engaged. Rachel's leadership also shines through her creativity and teamwork. She helped organize a musical quartet that performed during breakfast and lunch, bringing harmony to our mornings. And when it came to environmental stewardship, Rachel was right there, leading the charge, supporting our composting initiative and helping our school soar above in sustainability. Rachel, your passion and dedication lifts our entire falcon community. I'll get someone else really up here quick. So tonight, we are also recognizing a fourth grade teacher, Ms. Erica Frazee. She is a teacher who truly embodies the spirit of our falcon family. When I think of Erica Frazee, I think of heart. I think of joy, but most importantly, I think of commitment to our students. Ms. Frazee goes above and beyond every day to ensure our school is not only a place of learning, but a place where students feel welcome, supported, and inspired. Whether she's spending her summer painting vibrant murals in our pre-K bathrooms, creating opportunities for student leadership with our Falcon Mail Initiative, or using AI to compose a fight song that captures the heart of our school, she consistently finds creative ways to help our community soar. But her passion doesn't stop there. Ms. Frazee is also deeply reflective in her practice, always seeking out opportunities to grow. This summer, while teaching summer school, she requested observations and feedback so that she could put a new strategy into place for her students. She constantly pushes herself, knowing that when she grows, her students do too. She is a teammate who is always to be counted on, whether it's for a creative idea, a problem to solve, or simply to share a laugh. Her unwavering dedication to our students and school community makes her a true falcon, always soaring above for the sake of our students. Last and certainly not least, I am very excited to honor someone who quite simply is the heart of Field. Maria Cask, as we affectionately call her Ms. Cookie. At 84 years young, Ms. Cookie has been cherished part of our Field family for the last 11 years. She's the closest thing we have to a celebrity. The kids light up when they see her and if she's ever absent, they immediately start worrying. We often have to remind them that even Ms. Cookie is allowed to take a day off now and then. There's always a line, a long line in the cafeteria. And while I want to say it's because of the food, it's not. It's because Ms. Cookie, everybody wants to give Ms. Cookie a hug before they leave and clear the It's because Ms. Cookie, everybody wants to give Ms. Cookie a hug before they leave and clear their tables. She has an incredible way of making each child feel seen, valued, and loved. Her presence is a daily reminder of the warmth and connection that make Field such a special place to be. Ms. Cookie, you are truly a Falcon soaring above with love and dedication to our students and community. And I can proudly say that someday I hope to influence a school like you do.
If you are here from Field Elementary, would you like to stand to be recognized as well? Thank you for being such an amazing community. Next, our spotlight shines on Dobson High School. Well, Gabby Buckley, Principal at Dobson High School, please join me at the podium while we watch a video about your great school. Come on in.
I've been comparing Dobson to like a lot of other schools that I was looking at before going into my freshman year and has a lot more opportunities than other schools tend to offer, probably because of our culture diversity. And, you know, everyone here comes from a lot of different backgrounds.
They have really good classes here that can really choose what you want to do. So for example, you wanted to be a marine biologist, they have those courses for that. Studying as a freshman, with the freshman teams, they have a career exploration class. It gets them thinking about what career they might want to do after high school and just long term.
The AP program, I believe, is one of the most expansive AP programs in the entire district. So if you are really interested in honing your academic skills and to be able to earn lots of college credit before you graduate, I think this would be a great selling point.
The AP program is pretty great. That's like one, definitely one of my highlights. I can go and train as much as I want and it's a lot of freedom and I can still take all the difficult classes. I came here for basketball, just heard about the basketball program and I loved it. I was like, oh yeah, you know, everybody was just so welcoming, my teammates, the coaches.
Football, like we're really, really disciplined on like life skills outside of football. Everybody's welcoming, so it's like a good sport, I'd say.
It's just a smooth community. Like you're not going to come here and see a toxic community, like it's all good.
I think my favorite part that my experience here at Dobson is the staff. In all parts of school here, whether it be academics, electives, physical education, or extracurriculars, there's always a compassionate belt here on campus that can really help you and assist you with your endeavors and will be there to support you no matter what.
I wouldn't go to a different school. I actually love Dobson High School. It's pretty great. All my siblings graduated here, most of my teachers graduated here too. So that's really cool, watching them grow up to their point, except they are now. It's just a really good experience, all four years.
Good evening. Sorry, that video just being out in public is really sweet. I've watched it like four times in my office by myself. That's good. It's good to feel those emotions again. Okay, so we have, we're going to first honor our outstanding student and we have Tremaine Turner. And I'm going to have Tremaine stand up while I read this so his mom can get a really good video. Center stage there, right, right in the middle, goes straight in the middle there, yes. This is a spotlight for you. There you go. Tremaine Turner is a junior at Dobson and he shines as an all-around leader. He is an active member of our Dobson Leadership Athletic Council, a starting player on the varsity basketball team, a dedicated partner for Unified Sports, and a member of the track team. As well, his football peers elected him as a captain for this year's varsity football team as a junior. Though humble in nature, Tremaine's leadership makes a bold impact. Whether it's staying after events to clean up or helping our equipment manager, he is always willing to lend a hand. Even though he never seeks the spotlight, he truly deserves this recognition. His teachers and coaches praise him for being dedicated, driven, and kind-hearted. We could not be more proud to call him a Dobson Mustang. Tremaine, I'm going to get you a friend. I'd like to honor our outstanding educator, Mr. Henry Bribieskis. Moving up, coach. Henry Bribieskis, or Coach as I call him, is a truly unique educator. He loves teaching freshmen in Algebra I and he just loves teaching freshmen. That's great. And he coaches multiple sports, including badminton, softball, and our girls' basketball. He's a celebrated coach, taking our girls' basketball team to the playoffs every year he's been a Mustang and leading them to the 6A state championship game in 2023. What sets him apart is his commitment to his athletes' growth beyond basketball. He encourages his players to participate in multiple sports, even if it impacts his program, because he understands the value of developing well-rounded student athletes here at Dobson. And a lot of them just played at the flag football game tonight, which they won. Yes, in the classroom, Coach Bribieskis builds strong relationships with his students and has the ability to make freshmen excited about learning math. His students and his colleagues describe him as kind, generous, caring, and always ready to help. Congratulations, Coach. And our classified staff member recognition is Ms. Kelly Booth, the Secretary to Assistant Principals Jacob Fenley and Christina Sweeter. Ms. Kelly is one of the friendliest faces at Dobson. She started with us as our Restorative Practices Center Coordinator, then moved on to become our bookstore manager. Her talents did not go unnoticed and soon Mr. Fenley and Ms. Sweeter brought her on as their secretary. We're highlighting Kelly tonight because of her consistently positive attitude and her willingness to help anyone, even when it's beyond her job description. She's a quick learner, she's quick-witted, and always keeps us smiling. Kelly and her family are huge supporters of the Dobson community, attending everything from the fall play to basketball playoffs and a lot of events in between. She loves her family, Disneyland, a good Starbucks cup drop, and most of all, being a Mustang. Congratulations, Kelly. I'm going to go. And if you are here to celebrate with our Mustangs, will you please rise so that we can celebrate you as well?
Madam President, members of our governing board, this concludes our recognitions for this evening. So excited to bring this back. Thank you very much.
I have to admit something that I did wear blue because of Dobson High School. I was, I got to tell you, that video got to me too, because having been a charter member of the faculty at Dobson High School, I'm thrilled to see the work that our colleagues did in the eighties and the traditions that we tried to establish. That legacy is there. And I really thank Principal Buckley, but I really honor her student and her staff. They are Dobson High School and I'm very proud of them. Taught at Poston next to Field and the tremendous students, staff at both schools. And I'm so glad we got to honor them and thank you for bringing the tradition back. I think this is really a great way to recognize outstanding contributions. At this time, we have public comment. And we will have a video now on the call to the public procedures.
The governing board welcomes comments from the public on non-agenda items during the call to the public. Please remember, as a general rule, public comments will be limited to three minutes. And the duration of an open call to the public will be 15 minutes. The president may set specific time limits for speakers and the duration of the call to the public to maximize the opportunity for individuals to offer their viewpoints. Comments must pertain to a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the governing board. This is not an appropriate forum to complain about an employee, student, or others. Please use the procedures established in Policy 1-302 for this purpose. State law prohibits board members from commenting on or discussing the matters presented at the end of the call to the public. The board may ask the superintendent to review the issue or place it on a future agenda. A board member may also briefly respond to criticism of a board member or the governing board. Thank you for allowing this meeting to be conducted in a peaceful and productive manner.
Dr. Riley, how many folks have signed up to speak at this time?
We have 26 people signed up to speak. Two people mentioned two topics.
Okay, we have 26 speakers. Two people who have signed up for two topics, so they will be only allowed one time to speak and they'll speak on the two topics at their time to speak. As a reminder, during the election season, as we stated at the beginning, please make no mention of board candidates. And if each speaker would please state your name clearly and state your relationship with Mesa Public Schools. Because we have 26 speakers, we are going to limit speakers to a minute and a half. And so we would ask you to observe those time limits. There will be a clock so that you can keep track of your time and that you'll know when your time is winding up so that you can speak and state what you would like in that timeframe. So as we begin our public comment, what I will do is I will call folks up at three at a time so that you can be ready to speak. And so if you would please listen for your name. And again, when you do speak, state your name and your relationship to Mesa Public Schools. Okay, so we have, our first three speakers tonight will be Sheri Walton, Barry Ketchum, and Kendra Rhodes.
Good evening, Madam President and Board Members. My name is Sheri Walton and I appreciate this opportunity to present my concerns. As an experienced teacher, I do not feel the GLSEN organization will raise student achievement. I believe this organization will cause a distraction from the learning environment. Over half of Americans do not agree with the LGBTQ lifestyle and have been called names like homophobic, biphobia, and more. They are ridiculed, ostracized, and belittled for not accepting the LGBTQ lifestyle. Mesa Public Schools has already lost over 10,000 students in recent years. And if catering to the LGBTQ lifestyle is their new direction, then the school will probably lose many more students. More than half of the population in America is Christian and Jewish, which do not accept that lifestyle as something that should be taught or catered to in the public schools. According to the Arizona Education website, about 25% of the Mesa School District's student body is proficient in ELA, math, and science, and the majority of your student body is minimally proficient. With the GLSEN organization, I see those proficiency numbers declining even more as the majority of students feel ostracized for their conservative beliefs. Many of the parents that I have spoken with have left the public schools because of these woke ideologies. It would be beneficial to the Mesa School District to adhere.
Good evening. My name is Barry Ketchum. I've lived in the district for 30 years and also retired from Mesa School District. Thank you for allowing me your time. I understand that there is a large number of representatives with the LGBTQ organization GLESON present tonight. I've read their material and I'm concerned with it being instituted within the district. They will push the woke agenda and woke and controversial curriculum. I understand there are problems with harassment, bullying, discrimination, and racism. But these are issues affecting all the student population, not just one special group. The district already has many policies in place addressing these issues. More policies will only cause confusion and exasperation and anger among the student and staff. LGBTQ inclusive teaching practices would alienate a large portion of the students and many parents would reject them, creating more chaos within the schools. These would also create a bias within the student population and neglect the larger portion of the students. We don't need more policies. We don't need more inclusive teachers. We need to get back to our godly values and principles. Jesus said over 2,000 years ago, "Do to others what you want to be done to you." This is the core value and principle that needs to be taught and instilled in all of our students and staff. This is the one universal policy which has worked for hundreds of years. We need all our children to feel valued and uplifted and cared for. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kendra Rhodes and I'm a parent of an MPS, two MPS students, and I am here to push my woke agenda. I'm here to speak out on behalf of every single LGBTQ student in this district. And I'm here to speak out on behalf of each of our educators who knows these children by name and values them for who they are. Whether that's a student who wants to go to art school or a student who wants to pursue putting a trebuchet on the moon. They know these children's names, they know their hopes, they know their dreams. They will take students like my sixth grade son, who was a reticent joiner, who was shy, who was an introvert. And teachers like seize those children for who they are and they encourage them to follow their dreams. So my little guy went from somebody who didn't want to speak up in class to a member who ran for the student council and was excited to get up and speak in front of people because he understood that his teachers saw him for who he was. They weren't disguising prejudice and hate as pearl clutching concerns. They weren't disguising prejudice and hate as pearl clutching concern, because if that is why you're here, unclutch your pearls and sit down. We, as MPS parents, believe that our children are all valuable, that our educators who support these children are valuable, and that this is important information to put out in our community, that each of these children is an important child, the educators who support them are important educators. Specifically, I want to call out, I know has had her name brought up here. She's amazing. She is the exact kind of teacher.
Our next speaker will be Susan Miners, followed by Ash Rhodes and Jessie Shank.
Thank you, Board, for allowing me to speak. My name is Susan Miners. I moved here from the Northwest, where I was reading specialist, assessment specialist, learning specialist, you name it, I did it. And also taught in the Community College ESL. I just have a suggestion, and having attended quite a few of your meetings, the thing that for meeting efficiency and I think just general saving of time, I noticed that many times there's a large group of speakers who all come together and they all have the, sharing the same message. I would encourage this board and future boards to think about having one representative from that group come up and give the message, and then ask for all of those who came to share that message to stand instead of taking three minutes or two minutes or whatever. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ash Rhodes, and I also am a parent of two children in MPS. And I'm here tonight to also speak and support specifically of, but the rest of the educators here. An exceptional teacher who has made a profound impact on my family's life. Who taught my son Malcolm in third grade, my daughter Georgia in third grade, and is currently teaching Georgia again, now this year and fourth. Over the years, I've witnessed firsthand the incredible dedication and compassion she brings to her classroom, where she demonstrates that each and every student is important. Their mother and I, who you've met now, may not agree on much. In fact, we don't agree on a whole lot, but we agree that it's been transformative for our children in all the best ways. She's guided them through incredibly tough times with grace, empathy, and unwavering commitment to their well-being, things that every teacher at MPS does. It deeply concerns the both of us that she, along with others, are being harassed and that their jobs are being called into question because of baseless accusations of indoctrinating students with so-called gay agendas. Having observed their work closely over their entire educational careers at MPS, the only indoctrination that is occurring is kindness, acceptance, and respect for all people in a world that can be divided so often.
Good evening, members of the governing board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jessie Shank, and I am a business owner here in Mesa, where I run a food service business that provides many young people the opportunities to develop essential skills in customer service leadership and entrepreneurship. I'm here to thank you for your continued support of inclusive education and the teachers who go above and beyond to create a welcoming environment for every student. As a business owner, I see firsthand how an inclusive learning environment positively impacts the workforce. Young people who come to work for me are better prepared, more empathetic, and more capable of adapting to diverse situations when they come from schools that embrace all identities. When students are taught to value themselves and others regardless of their ethnicity, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, or background, they grow into adults who bring those values into the workplace. This makes them stronger employees, better teammates, and more effective leaders, qualities that every business in Mesa depends on to thrive. Mesa's commitment to ensuring that every student is known by name, served by strength in need, and graduates ready for college, career, and community directly benefits our business environment. It ensures that students entering the workforce have learned the importance of respect, empathy, and collaboration, qualities that translate into a more welcoming and productive workplace. These skills ultimately make Mesa an attractive place for businesses like mine to invest, grow, and continue creating opportunities for the next generation. By supporting inclusive...
Our next speakers, Gabe Hagan, Bridget Sharp, Barbara Carter.
Good evening, members of the governing board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Gabe Hagan, and I'm also a business owner here in Mesa. I am here to express my gratitude again for the board for supporting inclusive curriculum and for educators who champion diversity in our schools. As a business owner, I see firsthand how vital it is for our young people to develop the social skills and personal competence necessary to succeed in today's diverse and dynamic workforce. The students who come to work for us are more than just employees. They are members of our community who are learning to navigate the world that require empathy, adaptability, and collaboration. These skills aren't just taught through textbooks but are cultivated through an inclusive learning environment that values every student's identity and perspective. By supporting an inclusive curriculum, you are helping foster an environment where students can grow into well-rounded individuals. When Mesa Public Schools supports inclusive education, you are not only preparing students for academic success, but you're also helping shape them into well-rounded, capable, and confident individuals. This approach aligns with what businesses in Mesa need: employees who can engage with a diverse clientele, work effectively in teams, and bring innovative solutions to the table. A workforce that understands the value of inclusion is better equipped to thrive in any environment, contributing positively to our local economy and the broader community. To the educators that have stood up to ensure LGBTQ+ students feel safe and seen, I want to say thank you. I needed you when I was in school. So keep doing this. You are not only saving the lives, but you're also shaping our future leaders, future innovators, and change makers of our community. And to this, members of this board, thank you for your commitment to diversity and supporting those teachers.
Hi, good evening, board members. My name is Bridget Sharp. I am the State Director for the Human Rights Campaign here in Arizona. I get the distinct pleasure of working with students, both LGBTQ and allied students, as well as educators from all throughout the state. And I'm here to support my friend, who is an incredible educator. When kids are affirmed, and I've seen this firsthand, when students are affirmed, they succeed. And that helps every single student. You know, we heard earlier tonight about, you know, yes, we should be supporting every single student. When you affirm a group that needs affirmation, the other kids who are outside of that group see that. They see that example from educators and from administrators, and it creates an environment of feeling good and feeling like, you know, I can go to school, I can be successful, I don't feel like I have to hide myself. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Barbara Carter, and I'm a longtime resident of Mesa. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm not here to judge or condemn. I am here to speak truth. And truth is that God created man and woman. We do not need diversity, equity, and inclusion, social-emotional learning, and other agendas being taught in our school systems. We need to get back to reading, writing, and arithmetic, and improve our low proficiency scores. Thank you.
Our next speakers will be Stephanie Lanfair, Kristiana Hammond, and Jeff Thompson.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Lanfair. I am an employee of Mesa Public Schools. I am a proud Field Falcon as a teacher, and I was actually a Field Falcon as a student for a couple of years as well. Oh, also, I am now the proud parent of a Mesa Public Schools teacher as well, so just had to throw that out there. I just wanted to speak to what an amazing campus that we have at Field. We accept all of our students, we treat them all equally, we don't discriminate, we teach them kindness, and that's really important. When I went to Field, that's what, the way I was treated by my teachers, and it is my every hope that all of my students feel accepted as I did when I attended Field. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kristiana Hammond, and I am a parent of two kids here in the Mesa School System. I have been to several of these meetings over the last year or so and have watched the rising trend of anger and hostility being directed at the school board with a mix of genuine concern and a growing suspicion that not everything as it seems. I've tried my best to listen to the many grievances presented and have worked to understand the harms that many charge have been hoisted upon them by Mesa School policies, but it's difficult to discern what the actual injuries might be that justify the supersized drum and outrage that we've seen here. I understand that we aren't all going to agree with every policy that the board lays out, but to act as if these policies are turning our schools into apocalyptic hellscapes is a ridiculous exaggeration that just doesn't track with the experience that most of the families that I know are having in this school district. My family certainly isn't. I have two kids going to the schools here, and they've been going here since kindergarten, and one is now junior high and the other's in high school. And our experience is that the buses run on time, that the teachers are good people that care about the kids and take the time to help the ones that need it, that the facilities are always clean and well-maintained, and that the administrators are dedicated, smart, and helpful, and that the events are fun and well-attended, and that my kids are getting a good education and learning to be engaged participants in the society. My kids have gone off to their Mesa School happy in the morning and...
I'm Jeff Thompson. I'm a concerned taxpayer, and you've heard this before, nuggets of information. I watch these school board candidate debates. I'm not going to name anybody's gender or anybody by name. It's real informative to watch this, the debates. If you go back and see that, and the candidates, all the candidates wanted to send, wanted to set a higher proficiency rate, should be set real high. Well, we, this failing superintendency here, wanted to 2%. You're 32%, and they wanted to go 2%. And then one of the candidates backlash and said that not all kids are going to go to college, so they don't need to be proficient. And then one candidate said that their, one of their children had three non-speaking English students in the class. How does that work for either one? The non-speaking English students are getting cheated, and so are the English-speaking ones. This should have been cleared up. It was in the media in the late 90s, early 2000s. It's not good for anybody. And one candidate said that the 32% was the state average. You're the largest school district. You guys ought to be setting, you guys ought to be number one.
Our next speaker, Casey Baxter, and then Catherine Dye, and then Chris Hamlet.
Good evening, Madam President, Superintendent Forless, members of the board, superintendency. My name is Casey Baxter. I have the honor of being the principal at Franklin Accelerated Academy, and I'm not a new face. I show up every month because you know that I am on a mission to look for the good, because I truly believe if you look for it, you're going to find it. But oddly enough, I wasn't able to come up with a theme this time, because life can be a little bit random. So my theme tonight are the three Cs, because they're kind of random, but they all relate. So they're children, community, and challenges. So for children, I want you to know at my school, we don't do a lot of tangible rewards. It's more about intrinsic motivation, but we do have the Firebird store. And when you make good choices, you can earn Firebirds, and you can come, and you get to pick once every two weeks, any item off of the cart that is academic in nature. So it's still notebooks and pencils, because we're Franklin, and that's what we do. Kids really love it. It's really great, and they're always in awe. I want you to know that I have not changed the items on the cart in six months, but every two weeks, it's amazing and new, and it's literally the same thing, but they absolutely love it. And I love the way that children look at things, because with fresh eyes, even old things can be amazing. So I also want you to know that I am magic, but not really, but to the first grader whose lanyard broke, and it was, it was just irretrievable, I fished it out, fixed it with just an extra loop, and sure enough, we moved on with our day. Again, a really small problem that together we were able to fix and move on, but with those fresh eyes. So for community, I had the opportunity to go to both governing...
Madam President, Dr. Forless, members of superintendency, and other esteemed board members, my name is Catherine Dye, and I teach fifth grade at Franklin Accelerated Academy East Campus. I am currently enrolled at Grand Canyon University to earn my master's in educational administration. I wanted to thank you for serving on the board and for how much you do for the students and teachers in our district. In my program, I have been tasked with seeing beyond my classroom to get an idea of how the district works on a larger scale. Last week, I had the opportunity to shadow Mr. Eric Von Berg. I was able to observe what happens in parts of our teaching and learning department and how that translates to the work I do each day in my classroom. I also had the opportunity to ride on a school bus with one of our drivers, Mrs. Jennifer Majowski. Again, that allowed me to see beyond my class to the challenges that are faced by different members of the Mesa Public Schools family. Mesa Public Schools is a great place to work, and I want to express my gratitude for your continued support of teaching and learning, because we would not be able to do our job successfully without your support. Thank you for your time.
My name is Chris Hamlet. I have a son at Mesa High. I was going to read the GLSEN Call to Action that they sent out, that whole grotesque thing, but since they showed up and drowned out the community voices, I don't have time. So the Gay, Lesbian, and Straight Education Network sent out a Call to Action, and I want to set the record straight when it comes to the topic of LGBTQ in our education system. The languages in this Call to Action indicates that Mesa LGBTQ educators' lives and livelihood are being attacked. It's no different than the language the MEA uses. This Call to Action refers to those that disagree with pushing this evil agenda on our children as anti-LGBTQ extremists. Now, one can argue that it is not an evil agenda. However, if you go to their website, there is a "Leave This Site Safely" window that pops up immediately and tells children how to get out of the site in case their parents come around. So it tells them how to get out of the site quickly, and if you're not, if there's no evil agenda behind it, you wouldn't do that. It also tells them to clear their browsing data regularly. So here's where I set the record straight. People like myself speak out against this, are speaking out against the evil agenda. We're not speaking out against adult homosexuals and lesbians that want to do what they want behind closed doors on their own time. We are speaking out against pushing this garbage on our children. We are speaking about against indoctrination, hypersexualization of our children. In other words, the GLSEN and the MEA and the LGBTQ educators in Mesa Public Schools are not the victims. They are the culprits, and our children are the victims. And people like myself are here to stand in the gap and say, we've had enough, get back to education, as that's what you were tasked to do.
Our next speakers will be Heather Stradling, and I don't have a last name for Tiffany, and then Andy Young.
Good evening. My name is Heather Stradling. My six children all attend Mesa Public Schools and currently range from third grade to college sophomore. They have attended Franklin Accelerated Academy at Brimhall, Stapley, and Mountain View. We have recently learned that Mesa Public School has embarked on a journey to reinvent public education. This reinvention includes standard-based grading, AB alternate day block schedules, team teaching, academies of learning, and partnering with ASU's Next education workforce. We understand... We understand that the district is now implementing this new model in all six high schools in different phases. Due to major changes, we find ourselves looking for a traditional model of high school education for our youngest four children. I am here to ask the district to open a Franklin High School with traditional academics, traditional grading, and traditional daily schedule. The district offers many options for elementary schools and should continue that for high schoolers. In over 40 years, the Franklin traditional model has grown to four campuses and a junior high. Neighboring districts and charters have copied the Franklin model and expanded it to secondary grades. No other education model can boast such growth and success. With district high schools now moving away from a traditional education model, we believe it's time for Mesa Public Schools to expand the Franklin traditional program to high school level. Thank you for your consideration and your service to families and children in the Mesa Public School District.
Tiffany Benson, I am here by request from Mesa constituents as the founder of Restore Parental Rights in Education.
Excuse me, Ms. Benson, would you state your relationship to Mesa Public-
That's what I just said. Stop, this is my time. So my shirt is an object lesson.
Excuse me, ma'am.
For those who do not know-
That's her time.
For those who do not know the origins of the rainbow, it comes from the Book of Genesis, where God flooded the earth for the same wickedness that's being propagated in this district. It's the same sins today. Sex is a sensitive topic, okay? It's also a scientific topic. Nobody was born in the wrong body. That's a lie if you tell a child that, okay? These talks require parental consent and knowledge, if not the parent being in the room at the time it happens. Anything outside of this, anything outside of what is biblically, biologically, and binarily true about gender, anything outside of that is a lie. If you casually, haphazardly, or intentionally talk to a child about sex who is not your child, that does not make you a professional, that makes you a pervert. At the end of the day, it is what it is.
Good evening, my name is Andy Young, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I'm not a resident of Mesa, I'm a resident of the East Valley, but I am a practicing mental health therapist in the East Valley, in Mesa, sorry, as well as a mom of two LGBTQ kids. And so what I'm here to do tonight is to thank you, the Mesa Board, for your dedication to supporting and protecting LGBTQ youth and employees within your district. I can't share specific stories about my clients, but I can say being queer in the East Valley is not an easy thing. And I firmly believe that the tone of an organization and the culture is set by leadership, and you as leaders are sending a very important statement to the rest of the public school community within Mesa. I can speak firsthand about my transgender son's experience, and that was that we had to leave our public school, which killed me. I have a firm supporter of public schools, but we had to leave that public school for a charter school in Tempe that was more affirming and inclusive and where he felt more safe. So thank you for what you're doing, please keep it up, my clients appreciate it, I can tell you that. And as a Firebird volunteer for Glisten, I just want to say, we're not trying to break, we're not trying to turn straight kids gay, we're trying to turn gay kids into adults.
Our next speakers, our next speakers will be Jas Putnam, Sharon Benson, and Matt Greer.
Good evening, Board, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm coming as a community member and a parent of both an Asian student and an LGBTQ student. My name is Jas Putnam, as I said, and I'm here this evening to thank the Greater Mesa School District for supporting inclusive educators like my friend and others. I would also like to say thanks for establishing core values such as each student is important and the belief that diversity increases our opportunities. Celebrating and supporting diversity fosters a richer learning environment. When adults are able to model acceptance to our youth, all children win. Mesa's promised to serve the strengths and needs of their students, so they graduate ready for college is a true gift to our students. Meeting students where they are at in life and helping them love their uniqueness will be the bedrock to a more stable future for students and the community at large. Thank you.
Good evening, I am Sharon Benson, a retiree of Mesa and the grandmother of a Mesa student. I want to begin with a modified quote from Alexis de Tocqueville, who said, "America is great because America is good. And if America ever ceases to be good, America will cease to be great." Let me modify that to say MPS has been great because MPS was good. If MPS ever ceases to be good, MPS will cease to be great. We've all seen academic achievement plummet in Mesa, Mesa has ceased to be great. Why is that? It is because of a pushing of ideology that is not appropriate. The LGBTQ plus movement is not organic at all. Back in 2022, it was reported that there were 1.4% of 13 to 17-year-olds identified as LGBTQ plus, 1.3% of 18 to 24-year-olds, but only 0.5% of all adults. This is not organic. There is a, there is a committed ideology specifically to queer the American child, to separate-
I'm Matt Greer, I'm a father of two school-aged children that I home-schooled, but I'd like to get them into the schools, but I'm scared. The reason why I'm scared is because there were two teachers who were held as an example recently as being great when they are not. What they did was they went on a podcast, and they said that they assume that everyone they meet is LGBT, and they make it a point to find out first if they are. So in other words, I'm just going to call a spade a spade. They meet you, and their first order of business is to find out what kind of sex you're into. That's weird, it's wrong, and it's perverted. And they were talking that that is how they approach their students as well. At that point, they're predators, I'm sorry, I'm just going to say it, they are predators. If they're immediately talking to children about who they want to sleep with when they should not be doing that, that is wrong. Now, I'll be clear, I don't care what adults do in the privacy of your own room, okay? As long as everyone consents, you close the door, and you wash your hands when you're done, I don't care. But once you start involving kids, it's wrong, and it is a crime, and you need to stop these teachers and stop holding them as an example as how the other teachers need to be, because it is disgusting.
Our next three speakers, Kelly Berg, Mary Coombs, and Lee Costanzo.
Good evening, Board members, Madam President and Superintendency. Kelly Berg, I have sons in the district, one has graduated, I've attended Mesa Public Schools, and I live in the community. Teachers are asked to do so many things on a daily basis. We strive to know our students, build those relationships, and cultivate a learning environment for all students. We are also tasked with helping keep our students safe. At first, the weapons detection systems seemed to cause more stress and aggravation. However, in light of the past events, I'm thankful for the systems being in place. Much like the cafeteria lines at the beginning of the school year, students have learned to navigate the weapons detections lines. The lines are much shorter, and students are getting through them much faster now that they know the process. And at least my students feel the slight inconvenience outweighs the alternative of not having the detectors. Any students, sorry, and teachers are here to care for all students, make all students feel safe, and help all students learn. I'm thankful my children are students and getting a great education. Thank you.
Thank you for this time, my name is Mary Coombs, and I'm a parent of MPS students. My children have attended Franklin Schools for elementary and junior high and have thrived with their accelerated back-to-basics and traditional school model. The increasing number of families wanting to attend Franklin Schools with its subsequent increased number of campuses, and the efforts that other schools even outside this district have made to model it is evidence that the Franklin way of education is valued in our community. I am here tonight to ask you to help those students and families wanting to continue their education in this way by allowing Franklin Junior to expand and by offering a Franklin High School in 2025. I currently have a senior at Westwood High School where they have already implemented the new A/B block scheduling. My son has expressed this schedule to be more difficult to stay focused during the longer class periods and to learn and retain information with classes not meeting each day. Please give students a choice to continue with the success they've already experienced by also offering a high school with the traditional Franklin model and schedule for their high school education. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members, Dr. Forless, Superintendency, my name is Dr. Leanne Costanzo, I'm a family medicine physician. I live and work in Mesa, I also care for children in Mesa as a family physician. It's very interesting to me that the request to not have LGBT things in a classroom is being met with such resistance. I don't really understand it, because what we're asking is for you to help keep our kids safe. Have you seen how many kids are missing? 300,000 across the country right now. They just found 49 Arizona children that had been kidnapped and were being trafficked. When you hypersexualize children, when you expose them to sexual content, when you talk about sexual things with children, you set them up for predators, you set them up to think that that is normal. You set them up to have conversations with people they don't know over social media. And then they go out and they meet these people, and they get trafficked over and over and over again. And if you don't believe me, you need to talk to the women who have come forth and have talked about being trafficked as young children, and how they were not protected because of their sexuality. We need to protect our children, we need to go back to basics, 32% is abysmal. Nowhere else would you continue to work.
Our last speaker tonight is Ed Steele.
Good evening, members of the Board, Superintendency, my name is Ed Steele. I'm a 36-year resident of the district. I did sign up to speak on two agenda items, the first one is the key performance indicators, and specifically, the one relating to increase or maintain the percentage of funds spent in district service of students. You have a current baseline for 2022 of 73%. For the last seven years, you've been at 72% or above. You set a goal of 70% for the next five years, that makes no sense. You've been above that number for seven years, and you want to set a lower number as your goal, so that you can pat yourselves on the back and say, we met our goal, do better. The second item is Agenda Item 9C, Parent Square. I'm really concerned about this mobile app that you're going to have parents and teachers communicating, parents and staff. We don't know what the cost is, it looks like it's $6 a seat, which is going to run us 300,000 plus a year to implement this. That's just the subscription part. What's the teacher burden? Are we going to have to have teachers learn something else? They're already overburdened with things that don't relate to teaching. You say you're going to put this in 14 schools with the goal of testing the app's effectiveness. What are the metrics? How are you going to know if this is effective before you go and implement this throughout the district?
That concludes our public comment. At this time, we'll have the review of the agenda. If a Board member would like to pull a consent agenda item, would you please indicate by saying that you would at this time? It doesn't appear that we have any Board member to pull a consent agenda item, thank you very much. The consent agenda will remain as posted. Let's go to our first action item, which is Personnel Requests. Is there a motion to approve the Personnel Request, including the addendum?
So moved.
Ms. Sears has moved, is there a second?
I will second.
Dr. O'Reilly has seconded, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Personnel Request, including the addendum. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Ms. Kirby, would you please take our vote?
Ms. Kirby, I am Kiana Sears, vote in the affirmative.
Ms. Sears votes in the affirmative. We have unanimously approved the Personnel Request, including the addendum. Our next item is the Consent Agenda Items. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda according to the recommended action for each item?
So moved.
Ms. Sears has moved, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis has seconded, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda according to the recommended action for each item. Ms. Kirby, would you please take our vote?
Ms. Kirby, I vote in the affirmative.
Ms. Sears votes in the affirmatives. The Board has unanimously approved the Consent Agenda. Dr. O'Reilly, I believe that you wanted to make some comments at the end of the adoption of the Consent Agenda.
I just wanted to comment that we had a lot of, a lot of people in the community, and even outside the community, donate to our classrooms, and I just want to be thankful and recognize that they're supporting our teachers in our classrooms, and make sure they know we appreciate that and appreciate the support of our teachers.
Thank you very much, I'm very grateful for the support of the community, whether they're businesses, nonprofits, booster clubs, parent organizations, individuals. We're very grateful for your support and the belief in our kids, in our schools, in our community. Let's go to our action items, and the first action item is the adoption of the Mesa Public Schools 7th through 12th curriculum documents. Is there a motion to approve the 7th through 12th grade curriculum documents in ELA, Math, Science, and Social Studies?
So moved.
Ms. Davis has moved, is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Sears has seconded, it's been moved and seconded to approve the curriculum documents in ELA, Math, Science, and Social Studies. Is there any Board discussion? Yes, Ms. Davis.
I just want to verify what this is, who this is for. What are these documents, and who are they directed for? Are they for teachers or for parents?
Thank you, Member Davis, these are the curriculum competency documents that are parent-facing, they're for the community, and they are actually the Arizona standards that are just a little bit packaged differently, so that they're more in parent-friendly language, community-friendly language, that identify the skills and progressions across K-12 for a year-long course, semester course, and/or a year-long content by grade level.
Thank you, one more, will these competencies impact grading at all? Thank you. One more. Will these competencies impact grading at all?
No, the teachers grade and they plan instruction based on the standards, so that doesn't change. We already have these curriculum documents posted right now by, by grade level and content area. They just, again, are, are parent-friendly language and our CCAP members have provided some great feedback on, on what that looks like and sounds like.
Thank you very much, Board Member Davis. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I have some questions. So we had a study session on this the last meeting and they said it was two years in the making. But I, I did review some of the documents with some very tenured teachers who said, you know, a lot of it seemed like the state standards just rewritten, but weren't sure how we could put forward this, but say it's not gonna impact their lesson planning and their teaching. So one, if you could confirm, was this two years in the making and then how this will impact their teaching? Because if we're changing, if we're saying you're gonna teach these competencies, it doesn't, it's not clear to me how, how it's not having to ask teachers to change what they're doing again.
Thank you, Mrs. Walden, for the question.
Yes, it, these documents again are for parents. Teachers still design instruction from the state standards and these documents also contain the state standards just in that parent-friendly language. So their instruction and their planning is still based on those state standards, so that doesn't change. What this identifies are clear targeted skills and progressions by grade level or by course. So what they do, do, what's useful for teachers is they can see in one document by content where kids should be coming to them from the grade level or the course before and where they should end up at. Whereas in the past, which they still will be using the state standards to plan their instruction, but they would have to pour through every single content area, grade by grade, to identify that progression. So that's, in that way, it's useful for teachers. So it doesn't really, it, by posting these tomorrow, it's not gonna change what teachers are doing today other than it probably clarifies a little bit stronger what those indicators are, skill by skill and, and course by course.
So I didn't really get that in the study session because it seemed like it was a much bigger change than, than the way you just described it. Was this two years in the making?
Teachers have been involved in, in the creation of those competencies and identifying what those high priority standards are and, and how those connect across grade levels and content areas.
So if we're teaching to the state standards already and this is a, a new way of showing the state standards, how does it not impact their lessons? There's just, there's a big disconnect there. And I've, I've done some research into teaching for competencies and it seems like it's just another way to prop up grading and go to the more of that standards-based grading and not actually mastering the, the material.
So let me, let me, that's kind of a two-part thing. So the competencies really identify again where students should be. Let me think about how, how to phrase it. So the state standards are currently pages and pages of documents. So for example, last night we were working with CCAP on the elementary documents and we identified in the science content, there are cross-cutting concepts, there are core areas of identification and, and concepts, and then there's also science and engineering practices and procedures. And so teachers would have to look through all of those pieces, which they, they still will. Those will still be part of their instructional design. The competencies show in those grade bands also. So for example, a kinder first and second grader, where should they be by the end of that second grade? And where will they end up after they leave third, fourth, fifth grade? So they can see that across the board. So that helps them identify where concepts connect, what those very specific indicators are. And we are already grading on standards and, and communicating to families and parents how kids are progressing in those skills and by content area, by courses in the secondary level, et cetera. So this actually is more useful for teachers to help identify those pieces and it may inform our grading practices actually much better to help a parent understand truly where students are. And we also have a couple of teachers here, if you'd like to hear from them in terms of how it might impact what they're doing in the classroom today, tomorrow, et cetera, and that we're part of that whole process.
Sure. Now, I've, I've had other teachers that have reached out to me that weren't part of the project and one of the concerns is that there's just so many things changing at once and, you know, we already know, we've been informed that our new teachers don't know how to use their resources to teach to state standards and we've got concerns about, you know, removing a block scheduling and pathways and all these, these different things. And this does impact all grades K through twelve. And there's no real data on this and even across like a meta-search I was trying to do, there's a lot of theoretical application, but not actual data. But wouldn't it just, it seems like something we should maybe have piloted at a school or two? Like, we just heard for an app, we're gonna pilot it at fourteen schools. This is something that impacts all grades and state standards. And I think I would like to have seen it piloted first since we don't have any data before we just rolled it out two months into the school year to all grades at all schools.
Yeah, so just to clarify between the two things, the documents that are put before you to recommend for approval tonight are just parent-facing, community-facing documents that identify again those state standards by grade level, by course content. And then the additional piece to that, which I think you're questioning about is, is really a competency-based approach to instruction and how we are identifying how kids are learning across that progression of skills. And we do actually have a couple of, of schools, grade levels, and departments that are obtaining evidence right now based upon competencies. So also in alignment with a couple of your board goals, for example, of collecting evidence outside of just academic state standard kinds of pieces. How are we collecting evidence to show that students are learning? One of our specific examples that we've had in place and are continue to refine, we have the Seal of Arts, the state seal of arts, and our kids are collecting evidence right now in portfolios that are aligned to those competencies to obtain that seal. And so teachers from grassroots up are piloting some ways to collect evidence to better clarify, set goals. Not only the students are setting goals, but then also how can we report that learning? How can students report that learning? Self-reflect, self-assess? But also how can we report that to parents and really help parents understand truly where their kids are in, in those progression of skills?
Just, I don't have any other questions. Just a comment of just, you know, if it's state standards rewritten, I'm still trying to understand how it took two years and why we're, you know, we're two months into the school year and, and voting on, on this now. You're saying it's just the parent-facing part of it. So is the board not voting on what the teachers have, have to use then? Is, are we just, we're voting on parental documents, but not on anything else?
Yeah, these are the curriculum documents that the board has always approved per our policy. And then you have all appointed members as part of our community curriculum advisory panel and they provide feedback into what those curriculum documents look like, the structure of those, the alignment to graduation requirements, et cetera, that are required by our, our state board of education.
Because it does seem disingenuous though that if we, we're voting on this, but if we vote on this, then all the other pieces are going to, to roll out at once. So while we don't get to vote on that, the, the rollout of it or whether or not, like how teachers are using this, if, if, it seems like we're still in a sense voting on it. We're just saying, oh, this is the parent side, but then it all rolls out if we, if it passes.
If it passes tonight, we post those documents tomorrow and nothing, nothing changes. Teachers are still designing learning experiences for their learners from the state standards. That, that doesn't change.
Are there any other questions by board members? Dr. O'Reilly?
I just have one comment. I talked to the, we all appoint people to this curriculum advisory panel and I talked to a representative that I appointed and she was very appreciative of what she got and, and how helpful that the information she got was in making her suggestions and understanding. So I just want to thank the staff for what I heard from my representative that, uh, for good job that was being done.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. O'Reilly. Any other comments? I too want to acknowledge and appreciate the community members who served on CCAP. They've been at a lot of meetings. This has been a heavy lift. And, and I, I too talked with, with my representatives and they were very appreciative of the way in which it was presented. They understand what, what the competencies are for. At this point, I, what I would like is an explanation on why we're going towards competencies, first of all, and then how it reflects our portrait of a graduate. And I do want to follow up though on Board Member Walden's question. So could you please talk about why we're, why we move towards competencies? And, and how does it reflect our mission as the portrait of a graduate is the MPS mission?
So competencies again, well, let, let's talk about for right now. We report information about students' learning. We report those in grades. We report those in seat time at the high school level. And Arizona has offered us the opportunity of seat time flexibility because we know learning doesn't just happen from bell to bell or while they're in a seat for one course from, you know, nine o'clock to ten o'clock or nine o'clock to ten thirty, et cetera. And so seat time flexibility and competencies really help us to define what that learning can look like outside of the classroom or in other opportunities. For example, you could be earning credit or learning competencies in your social studies courses for the ELA, for the English Language Arts competencies, for those skills, for those state standards, et cetera. And so we know that learning doesn't happen, again, just in that seat. Just because we sat there for hours in a semester doesn't mean that we actually learned. And so we want to identify and help parents and teachers and students identify really what does it look like to master a skill and master a progression of skills. And then how do those skills connect across content areas and not isolate those pieces as well? We also have invited industry into our classrooms, businesses. We're looking, we talked a lot about earlier, those, those durable, transferable skills that we want to prepare our students for. And this is, this is how we want to create those critical thinking skills or provide learning experiences that have well-defined competencies that we can help students and parents really understand how they're progressing and how that's gonna prepare them for their futures.
Thank you very much. The, the, I, piggybacking on, on Board Member Walden's questions, I'm reading the link that we got about competencies that was provided in status by Dr. Forless. And, and it, there's a quote here in the third paragraph. "By breaking down learning objectives into specific measurable competencies, teachers can create more targeted lessons and assessments that help students meet these broader goals." So I think what is, what is causing some anxiety, particularly amongst our teaching staff, is that they would be expected to change their lessons and to change the way that they do assessments. Based on just that statement, "teachers can create more targeted lessons and assessments that help students meet broader goals." And, and frankly, based on all of the changes that are occurring, like the academies and the block scheduling, standard-based grading, teachers are worried that this is now going to be a different type of grading, a different type of assessment that's going to be expected, different types of lessons. And, and, and frankly, they're worried about the expectations if we pass competency like this. Could, could you help maybe alleviate some of that anxiety that I think our teaching staff is having as well as parents who have written us? We've gotten, the board has gotten numerous emails on, on the competencies. So could you please maybe address those, those concerns?
Yes, and our teachers are the experts in their area. They're the content experts. So we want them to be involved in the design, the articulation, the reporting, all of that information. And so right now we do have many teachers across our campuses that are, again, like I said, piloting different ways to collect evidence. We have, like you mentioned, standards-based learning and reporting in place because teachers are able to identify more confidently and accurately what those standards are asking for and how can we report that information? How can students use that information to set their own goals? Going back to how are, you know, to alleviate their fears or frustrations or concerns, we definitely would never roll anything out across the district without teacher input. And that's why we have teachers collecting artifacts, collecting ways to help identify what are those state standards saying? How are we helping parents to understand where students are? If we're reporting that a student has a C in math, what does that mean? A C in what skill, what area, what is the competency that, that kids are progressing? What are those competencies kids are progressing through by the end of that math course? And so, again, back to the teachers, we want them to be involved in this process. Many of them are, are super excited about how competencies really help package those standards and help them truly identify the progressions along the way. Because again, those state standards are writ, those are documents written for teachers, but they are lengthy and they are long and this helps, really helps them package it in a way that they can start planning units and defining those progressions along the way.
Okay, and I have one more question. It, you have in the same document, key findings from research. And it, and you are indicating here that because students have a clear sense of learning targets, there, there, there are more positive changes in learning capacities. That's one of the statements that's made. And, and, and that students in Colorado and Maine who were based in competency systems outperformed their peers and showed higher engagement. That is the type of thing that, that the board is, is very concerned about. We want better student achievement. We want better student outcomes. So I think one of the things that might alleviate anxieties and concerns and fears is to show us maybe from our own people who are doing the, the data, those who are, who are maybe piloting in their classrooms, but also from other districts where this has actually been the case. Can you provide us evidence? I think as, as, as Board Member Walden is asking, that clearly student outcomes are impacted through competencies that are clearly stated, that kids understand, parents understand, and that teachers now can provide more targeted lessons.
Yes, we, we have taken teams of teachers across the district to visit places that have competencies, have competency-based approaches, have different ways of reporting the learning. And we have modeled that all of Kansas City to Wisconsin to, I think, New York City, other, I mean, I've got teams here that can talk directly about the details of, of where we visited, the, the outcomes that those districts have achieved. And kids and teachers articulating how much better and easier it is to identify what those specific areas are in terms of learning. And so absolutely, we can, we can provide all of those places and information that we have based all of the work that our teachers have, have been providing or have been participating in to get to where we are.
I, I think you've hit, hit a key point and the key point is information and that we're communicating with our parents and our teachers and that we are hearing them and, and, and taking in their concerns and that we are communicating the benefits as well as the costs so that they can assess where they're, where they're at. And I, I really believe that the district communicating what, what competencies are, why we're, why we're adopting them and how we can impact student achievement. If we can do that, I, I really believe that there will be a greater acceptance of competencies and, and there won't be so much fear and anxiety associated with them. Communication's the key.
I just have another comment, if you don't mind. I think you did a really excellent job summing up the concerns and the feedback that we're getting and that was very well said. But we had talked about this- But we had talked about this in the study session, and it was brought up that, you know, who's done this before? What's the history and what were the outcomes? We didn't have any information and nobody could answer those questions in the study session. And now we're hearing that people have been traveling and seeing how this works. So what, what changed in the last two weeks?
I don't believe we shared the information about where we've traveled and, and what we've learned.
When I asked in the study session, I said, you know, when we talked about being guinea pigs in the district, and the answer was, well, this is new and who's done it before and what were the results? And nobody had any answers. And now it sounds like you've been traveling and working on this. So I'm just wondering what, why the information didn't come up when I asked about it in the study session?
I, I apologize, I don't recall that, but I do remember there being a question about the data for the curriculum documents, and the data really is the state standards. That's what the curriculum documents are. But we can certainly bring more information about the learning and, and the districts that have been participating in competency-based approaches, which are different than the competency curriculum documents. But certainly happy to, to bring that information back and, and share all of that.
Madam President, may I respond?
Of course.
Thank you very much, Madam President and Board Member Walden. In the discussion during the study session, there was a request for more information around competencies that Dr. Eastless provided in my status report last Friday that Mrs. Hutchinson is referring to this evening. So if there's another request for additional information, we, we can continue to provide that. I think it's important for the board to understand that these documents are seventh through 12th grade, as you well know. CCAP is currently taking a look at elementary, kindergarten through sixth grade, world languages, fine arts, and physical education. So this is just the beginning of a process. And so it is important that we understand what this design looks like, and we will continue to provide additional information to the board as asked, as Mrs., as Dr. Eastless did at the last meeting.
So, and I understand you provided that in status, but it's just, it's on YouTube, so I'll just send you the video. You can watch it. So is this something then we should, I feel like we need to wait to make a decision on? I feel like there's, there, I mean, here, there's a lot of ifs, there's a lot of variables, and there's a lot of promises. I'm not comfortable voting on this.
But we do, we do have a motion on the floor.
We can always withdraw the motion and make a new motion.
I, I believe that we have a motion on the floor unless board members want to withdraw the motion. That would take a second.
Yeah, that's an option.
I don't hear a second. So we will have a vote on the motion as proposed. Is, on the seventh grade curriculum documents in ELA, math, science, and social studies, is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, Ms. Kirby, would you please take our vote?
Ms. Sears votes in the affirmative.
Ms. Sears is in the affirmative. With a vote of four yea and one abstention, we have approved the seventh through 12th grade curriculum documents in ELA, math, science, and social studies. If we take a look at our next action item, it is a request for reduction in square footage. Is there a motion to approve the reduction of square footage at Edison Elementary, Franklin Accelerated Academy at Jordan Campus, Keeneo Junior High, Longfellow Elementary, Lowell Elementary, Madison Elementary, Rhodes Junior High, Summit Academy, Webster Elementary, and the Serine Montessori Center? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Member Davis has moved. Isn't there a second?
Can I see her second?
Ms. Sears seconds. Is there any discussion?
I believe Ms. Walden.
Scott Thompson has some information for us.
Go ahead, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Madam President, Member Walden. Just real quickly, just going to bring you guys back to master planning for a moment and kind of revisit why we're having this discussion. So one of our, one of our four strategies is the reduction of portables. And in, in an effort to get going, if you remember, we really started this conversation in the spring. And in truly amazing effort by our operations department, we were able to eliminate 20 portables from our campuses over the summer and a little bit into the beginning of the school year. With that, typically, what is required by law and, and by the policy of the SFOB or the School Facilities Oversight Board is to request a reduction in the square footage. So for an educational background, about 20 years ago, when the SFOB or the SFB at the time was created, an inventory of all campuses throughout all districts in the state was created, and the SFOB is the owner of that data. They also watched to see whether a district is qualifying for new construction of facilities. And the reason that they asked for this approval of the reduction is that they wouldn't want to have a district eliminate space and then apply to have the state build that space. We are a little behind the curve. That is not unusual. I'm also your representative on the School Facilities Board, and we often get these requests in, in retroactivity. But because we moved so fast this summer, we didn't get all this work done. We're getting it done this evening. By having you vote on these, basically, they, they ask for a, a, a document that just states that we're reducing the square footage. So we are doing this backwards, but it will be okay because none of these portables are going to result in any kind of additional square footage needs for the district. We've already talked with staff about that at the SFOB. So this is the acknowledgement of 20 portables being removed from our campuses, your official request to, to have that reduced from our inventory at the state level. And in the future, we will do this in a proactive manner. We just got going pretty fast this summer, didn't think we were going to get all this work done quite so good, so well. So here we are this evening approving these 20. Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation, Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion?
Sure.
Just one question. So I, thank you for that and for explaining the cost savings, too. That's always really nice to be able to, to have that data since we want to be fiscally responsible. So we feel in our projections of enrollment, we feel comfortable that we can do the reduction in space and then, you know, I know nobody has a crystal ball for like 20 years down the road, but we're not going to end up with an overcrowding of the schools.
We are, and I will defer to Dr. Strong, but we are starting with the schools that we are absolutely sure we are not going to need the square footage anytime soon. And so understand, we're a kind of a, a bottom-up approach. So we're starting with the schools that have the most capacity and don't need all of that at this time and reducing their square footage. And we're going to keep moving up towards a goal of, you know, the most obvious to the, you know, a little less obvious. And then, and then we'll really have a discussion of whether we should remove these or not, depending on programming, depending on some of the other strategies of our master plan. But these 20 were absolutely, we met with those principals, we discussed their removal, we looked at their demographics, there was no signs of them being used for any other purpose, and there was no need for, for students in any, any type of shape of five to 10 years.
That's really excellent. Thank you so much for explaining that.
Thanks again, Mr. Thompson. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, Ms. Kirby, would you please take our vote?
Ms. Kirby, a vote in affirmative?
Ms. Sears in the affirmative. Unfortunately, I cannot read a screen that's all the way in the back. There it is, okay. If we, yeah, thank you very much for changing our screens that are at our, at our desks here. Okay, we have a unanimous vote to approve the reduction of square footage. Let's go to our next action item, which are the guardrails for student outcomes aligned to the governing board goals. Is there a motion to approve the guardrails for student outcomes aligned to the governing board goals?
So moved.
Ms. Sears has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis has seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve the guardrails for student outcomes that align to the governing board goals. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Ms. Kirby, would you please take our vote?
Ms. Kirby, a vote in affirmative?
Ms. Sears in the affirmative. With a vote of four yea and one nay, we have approved the guardrails for student outcomes. Onto discussion items. Our first discussion item is information and updates on threats to our schools. The leadership team will update the board on the safety measures and protocols Mesa Public Schools is using to keep students safe during this time of elevated school threats throughout the nation. Dr. Forless, I know that you are ready to start, and Dr. Malawine, Mr. Almore, and Sergeant Chuck Lines will be joining you.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'm looking, oh, there they are. They're ready. All righty. As I mentioned in my superintendent update, that I would come back to this topic and, and share information in detail. As we walk through the presentation this evening, I want to make sure that we're very clear that we are going to hit on the current reality in Mesa Public Schools related to school threats, our safety protocols, how Mesa Public Schools and Mesa Police Department work together to respond to these threats. This is a two-pronged approach. Not only do we take a look at our, do we follow our discipline matrix, but we also follow the investigation protocols of Mesa Police Department. Many of our families have asked us, when they receive a letter that says that, that there was a threat to their school and it was deemed non-credible, the next natural question is, what is the definition of a non-credible threat? So I want to make sure that we talk about that this evening. Also, how we support our students, and then some public service announcements that we are working on as a way to help to mitigate these challenges that we are currently working through. In all of this, as I share with you, the, the current reality, I think it's very important that our community understands what our commitments are to them and our communications. We are committed to being transparent and sharing accurate information. At the same time, we honor the privacy of minors, so sometimes that can feel a little tricky. Where parents or community members want to know more information, we are bound by maintaining the privacy of minors. We also need to abide by the protocols during an investigation. If we share information outside of what we have been instructed by Mesa PD, that could cause the impeding of an investigation. So I just want to make sure that we talk about those out loud. So let me talk to you a little bit about our current realities since last week. Since last week, we have had threats to 24 of our schools in our district, many of these schools with multiple threats on multiple days. We have had 12 students, including one as young as 11 years old, from across the district who have been charged by Mesa PD for threatening and intimidating, false reporting of terrorism, and interfering with the educational institution. And all of that has led to high absenteeism of students as well as staff, fear, and disrupted learning for our students. We're a learning organization, so disruption to our, to learning is a huge problem in our schools, and this, these threats have got to stop. I will tell you that as early today, there was a threat at Mesa High School. It was investigated. Mesa PD found that the phone call to the school was made outside of the United States. So that is the amount and level of investigation that is happening, but during that time, our school was put on lockdown, which disrupts a learning environment. So again, we are being very clear about what the challenges are, and we are talking about why this is happening and being very out loud around what is happening with our students. We have current safety protocols in place, and that is because of our amazing director, Almore, who works very, very closely with maintaining high levels of research as well as best practices across the country, and has brought that to us here in Mesa Public Schools. So I'm going to turn it over to you for just a bit, Al, and you can walk us through our current safety protocols, and I'll just manage the clicker. How about that?
Sounds good.
All right.
Madam President, members of the board and superintendent, thanks for having me here tonight. I always like to start off by just saying there's, it was pre-Sandy Hook and post-Sandy Hook. Since Sandy Hook, we've really kicked it into gear in increasing the layers of security at all of our campuses. We started out with perimeter fencing, which creates one point of entry. We began to install cameras at all of our schools, and then we had a process where we started creating the locked front offices, the secured lobbies. Those offices, those schools who don't have secure lobbies still have the secure front doors with the intercom phone system where they can vet the visitors before they unlock the door. We have school resource officers at all of our secondary schools. At our high schools, we have a second officer to assist the full-time SRO. I want to point out that the vast majority of these funds come from the state through the Safe School Grant, and we supplement the secondary officers at the high schools and then a couple of other schools with our funds, with Mesa Public Schools funds. We have school security at each secondary site. And then I have a squad of district security officers who primarily patrol the elementary schools, and then their secondary responders for the secondary schools. Staff members are required, not required, but they're encouraged to download an app that they can put on their phone, and that way, any staff member can put a school into lockdown from the touch of their phone. And that has happened several times throughout the implementation of that new layer of security. Like I mentioned, the security cameras, we have over 3,000 views now around the district. We have a pretty robust monitoring room at my office that we try our best to monitor all those cameras, but we encourage the individual schools to try to do, monitor their schools as well, mainly the perimeters and the front offices for any intruders. We have students who have required to wear their IDs this year, and of course, staff members required to wear their IDs. We have visitor management system. We're implementing an electronic version of that at the elementary, and I, I've actually played with it. It's, it's pretty easy to use, and the parents seem to like it, so that's going to be really beneficial. And as you know, we've implemented our weapons detection system. Yesterday, we started out at Stately. That's one of the, that's the first junior high, and it's going well. I was there yesterday and today. I'll be there again in the morning. So the kids learn very quickly what sets it off, like laptop computers and three-ring binders and things like that. And of course, we have the vape detectors that we installed over the summer. The feedback we're getting from the principals is very positive. One principal said he can't believe how much the students don't hang out in the bathrooms anymore because the vape detectors are in there, which is our goal. We want the bathrooms to be a safe place for people to go to the bathroom. So, okay, so now we're going to talk about what happens when we get a threat. So when we, I will, I want to start out by saying, the vast majority of the reports that we get come from students. Students report these things either to their parents or to a staff member or to the SRO, which is kind of cool because these kids want a safe school environment. So when they, whenever we receive a threat, we, obviously, we take them all seriously, even if it turns out later to be some type of a joke. We take them seriously, and we immediately start a threat assessment. We have a threat assessment tool, and then we involve the Mesa Police Department, whether that's the SRO. If the SRO is not available, we will call for dispatch, Mesa Police Dispatch to dispatch an officer. And as we know, we don't have SROs that are elementary, so we have to rely on the patrol officers. I'm going to turn it over to Sergeant Lines. He's going to walk you through the pretty robust protocols and policies that the Mesa Police Department has implemented when it comes to school threats.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Madam President, Superintendent, and members of the board, I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. I just want to introduce myself. I am Chuck Lines. I've been sergeant with City of Mesa, Mesa Police Department for about 20 years. Been with the City of Mesa Police Department for 28 years, total of 28 years. Been with the City of Mesa Police Department for 28 years, total of 28 years. Been with the School Resource Officer Unit for a little over eight years. I want to begin by saying that we have an outstanding working relationship with the Mesa School District, and it's because of this relationship that we are able to approach threats, school threats, in a unified manner, and we have a much greater success at resolving school threats as a result of this relationship. So I want to extend my appreciation for that. The Mesa School Resource Officer Unit has 19 full-time school resource officers. As Mr. Moore previously mentioned, the, we have a full-time school resource officer in each junior high school and every high school in the City of Mesa. Along with the full-time SRO in the high schools, we also have a secondary officer Monday through Friday. So we have two officers on campus, Monday through Friday, at all of our high schools. The School Resource Officer Unit is in three different districts, Mesa being obviously the largest district. We also have three schools in Gilbert School District and one school in the Queen Creek District, which is Eastmark. The Mesa Police Department has a specific policy related to the investigation of threats, but we have a separate policy as it relates to the investigation of school-related threats because those are a unique situation when we have a school campus that receives a threat. Every threat that we receive is taken seriously and is credible unless proven otherwise, and when I say credible, I mean believable or potentially, a potential reality. So every school threat that we receive is considered serious, and we take it as a credible threat. During normal school hours, the School Resource Officer will conduct the investigation. If it's outside of the normal school hours, the police officer, patrol officer, as Mr. Moore previously mentioned, will investigate the case, and then myself or my counterpart, Sergeant Stigenga, who is the other second School Resource Officer Sergeant, will receive updates later in the evening. It's important to remember that if a parent or a student hears about a threat, it's critical that it is reported immediately and not, not, and I think it was perhaps mentioned earlier, not reposted, but reported immediately so we can get on top of it and start investigating on it immediately. We will oftentimes loop in our Criminal Investigations Unit if we need detectives to help us out to track down the source of an investigation. We'll also loop in our Intelligence and Counterterrorism Unit if we need assistance from them as well. And then the following day, assuming an investigation is picked up in the evening and worked by a patrol officer, if additional work is needed to be done, the School Resource Officer Unit will continue with the investigation the following morning immediately. At times, we get information that a threat was made towards a school, and we will make every attempt to, if we have that person identified, make every attempt to contact that person before they make it to school. We don't want them to come to school if at all possible. If it is determined that a threat is credible, we will, and if we have a specific date and time that a threat is supposed to be made, such as the Mesa High School threat that came in earlier today, that Dr. Forless mentioned earlier, we will contact patrol officers and get patrol officers scrambled to the school immediately, and we will keep them at the, on campus as long as it takes. I think today, at the Mesa High School threat, we had seven or eight officers that were there in addition to the two full-time School Resource Officers. So we had a large presence of police officers scouring the area. We also called in the area unit to search the area as well. I also contacted Mr. Moore, and he sent district security officers to the school. So we had a very high presence of security until we were able to determine that the call actually originated from overseas, and it was actually a threat, this particular threat, without getting too much in detail on the, on the case. It was a threat that was made to several schools in the valley, and several agencies were in the process, along with our agency, investigating that threat. There are several types of charges that we consider when a school threat is, is made. The most obvious is threatening and intimidation. Another is terrorism or terroristic threats, interference with an educational facility, or use of electronic device to harass, intimidate, threaten, or cause offense. Those are the primary crimes that we're investigating when it involves a school-related threat. The main types of threats that we receive are verbal threats, which is basically a student is overheard making a threat to somebody else, or even to themselves, they just, it was overheard, a verbal threat. A written threat, which is typically in the form of a text message, or a chat in a chat group, or through social media posts. Once we receive a threat, a credible threat, a threat that we believe is, is possible, that we're not able to immediately resolve. If there's a threat that is unresolved, we'll place the school into lockdown and begin lockdown protocols. Again, we will start scrambling additional units, patrol units to be on campus and be prepared for any action that they may need to take on, on, on their part. We will then begin the, at times tedious process of tracking down the originator of this threat, and that could involve interviewing numerous students to determine where this threat originated. It could be just a couple of students, could be just one student, or it could be 10, 10 or 12 students that we have to track down to determine. So-and-so told me this, and then we go to that person, and so-and-so told me this, and then we go to that person, I heard this person say this. And so it may involve several interviews before we're able to track down the source of the threat. If it is a social media post, and the typical social media platforms that students are using is Snapchat, Instagram, TikTok, Discord, Telegram, well, I could go on all night. But these are the typical sites that we will receive social media posts, and we need to, we need to determine the source of this post. If a student reposts it, then their handle or their, their, their name will be at the top of the post, and so we'll go to them thinking that that's the originator, when in fact, all they did, what they did was repost something that they had seen or had received. And so it's again, critical and important that these things be reported and not reposted because it just delays our investigative efforts by trying to track down the originator of a post. Once we identify who we believe is the originator of the post, we'll immediately serve a preservation letter so that the information is preserved and, and not lost over a period of time, and then we'll start immediately working on a, a search warrant so that we can obtain the information from the social media platform. That's where our Criminal Investigations Unit detectives come in, into play in these investigations. We'll reach out to the Criminal Investigations Unit. Every dist, we have four districts in Mesa. Every district has its own criminal investigations. You know, we'll reach out to them to start the process of a preservation letter, and then the process of a search warrant. We'll, we'll loop the parents in as quickly as we can so that they know what's going on. We will not interview a, the person that we believe created the post without contacting the parent first. That's going to be the first phone call that we believe so-and-so made a threat to the school. We'd like to have the opportunity to speak to them, and then get, we'll speak to the parents to get that approval. The investigations, again, like I mentioned, it will involve Criminal Investigations Unit, the Intelligence Counterterrorism Unit, and we, I just spoke with the FBI last week on another threat that we were working. And it could very well include seizing the student's phone so that we can preserve whatever evidence there might be on there. We'll then complete a threat assessment that is a standardized Mesa Public Schools document that Mr. Moore previously mentioned, that will, through a series of questions, both with the student and the student's parent, we will be able to determine if he is a low, medium, or high risk to the school community. With the parent's approval, we'll speak with the student and, and complete the investigation determined, obviously, if we have enough probable cause to make an arrest. Two types of arrests that we will do is either, are in two forms. One is submitting paperwork to the prosecutor's office, juvenile prosecutor's office, for review and filing criminal charges, or the other option is booking, booking the juvenile into jail. There are several ways that parents can assist us with the investigatory process of a school-related threat. One is to speak with their student, speak with their son or daughter, and encourage them to reach out to school personnel, to the police, to the School Resource Officer, and report, report the threat immediately. Next is to get a screenshot of the post that they received through either text message or through a group chat or through a social media post, get a screenshot of that, not repost it, but to report it, and provide that information to, again, a school official or a police officer. And then determine the who, what, where, when question. When did they receive this post? Who was it that they received the post from? What did the post say? And where was this post? Where did this post originate? What, what social media platform did it originate from? All of this information will be needed to submit a preservation order and a search warrant to receive information from, from these platforms and to be able to resolve the threat. Again, I want to emphasize that all threats are taken seriously. All threats are deemed credible unless we have reason to believe, such as a student said, yep, I made that, I made that comment, I was just joking. It's important to remember that whether they say they're joking or not, they're still going to be, if we have enough cause to, to charge them, if we have probable cause to charge them, we will charge them, whether they're joking or not. So making a, a joke about a school threat disrupts the learning environment. It, it is exhausting on, on resources, on school resources, on police resources, and causes a tremendous level of fear on the campus, and, and whether they were joking when they made the comment or not, it's taken very seriously. Again, I want to leave you with the reminder for everyone here and for, yeah, for everybody that's listening to remember to report the threat that they receive rather than repost it because that's going to be, that's going to cause delays in the investigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Lines, and you'll see here on this slide that, as Sergeant Line said, is that we take every threat seriously, and it is deemed non-credible when there was no actual intent, and through that threat assessment is there's no access to weapons, means that there's no guns in the home, they're not locked up, they don't have access to them either from a friend or family member. So I think that that is, that is something that is very important for our families to, to know what is deemed non-credible. And as Sergeant Lines mentioned, the Maricopa County Attorney's Office has started an initiative, report, don't repost, for all of the reasons that Sergeant Lines talked about. So that's the police department. So when the police department gets involved, that's the work that they do related to an investigation. So I'd like for Dr. Malawine to talk about, so what does that look like in terms of discipline and consequences inside of Mesa Public Schools? And not only Dr. Malawine's had the heavy lift on these threats, as they've been primarily in our junior highs and high schools, but also our elementary assistant superintendents who supervise schools have been working through this as well.
Thank you, Dr. Forless. Madam President, members of the governing board. So as we have, if these, as these threats have ramped up, we've, we've leaned into our discipline matrix to make sure we are maintaining consistency. One of the main objectives of the discipline matrix, matrix when we, when we brought all the stakeholders together, developed and implemented last year was to maintain consistency. So we would look at our, we would look at a couple of different types of threats that would be made. The two that we're, that I would speak to that have come into play in the last couple weeks is one student makes a threat towards another student. We consider that a level three violation. With that, it's a, it's a three-day suspension. It could be less than that depending on the level of it, but it's generally about a three or five-day suspension. Try to stay in that, in that space, and that's what our discipline matrix has led it, who's led us to. The threat, the threats that Dr., excuse me, Sergeant Lines and Mr. Moore have dealt a lot with, and we've all dealt a lot with, is these, these threats to school, the disruption of the education environments, a threat to a school. A threat to a school is a level five. A level five is an eight to 10-day suspension or a possible recommendation to alternative placement. So how we've began to address these as you have a child, generally, it's a junior high child that has joked. Well, we've had students in the hallways yelling, I have a gun. We've had students telling other students, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring a gun and shoot up to school. Those things were said with the intent of humor. However, like Sergeant Line said, it takes a lot of manpower, it costs a lot of stress. One, two things have to be present for learning to even begin to occur, that's a safe and orderly environment. What I can share with the Board is our, our buildings are safe. We've taken all the precautions. We have been working on this intensively for years. I can, I can tell you, in our Stately community, the school was always safe, but it wasn't orderly. We had a lot of fear. We had a lot of the community, we had parents fear, teachers fear, we had students fear. We had parents coming to the campus and upset because they didn't know everything, and sometimes there's an active investigation going on. So it wasn't an orderly environment. So what we've decided to do is we've had to take a hard line on school threats, and any school threat, we're just going with a 10-day suspension. Then when we, when we go through the, the investigation and we get involved and we, we do our threat assessment, we can determine, is this a credible threat or a non-credible threat? Something that's a joke, something that turns out that there was no intent, that we deemed non-credible, we, we go 10-day suspension, and we're putting things into place for that student to come back to school. We want them to, we want them, the parents to bring them back. We want to make administrator contact. We want to have a counselor involved, do a check-in. Just because it was a joke, we want to, we want to, we don't want any stone unturned that we might have missed a student crying out for help or something. We don't want to let a child back in school that maybe was crying out for, for help in a situation, and then we let him come back to school without having some of our, our professionals check in on them. If a student, if the threat is deemed credible, maybe a student had some intent, maybe the student had a loose or a tight plan. Did the student have access to weapons or made a specific threat and doubled down and said, yeah, I, I hate this place and I'm gonna do something? I'm just paraphrasing, right? We, we deem that a threat, we are gonna, we'll move right for alternative placement. And that can look like a number of things. We, we have three alternative sites, and we have different resources and supports at those sites to determine that each, every student is different. Every student, every situation is different. We have to weigh the supports that we need to be put in place depending on the situation. So we have Riverview, we have Superstation, we have Eva Crossroads. We could recommend one of them. We also have built a relationship with a, with a credit recovery dropout prevention program called Grad Alliance. You guys have heard, we can go for a long-term suspension and recommend Grad Alliance. So that gives a child a path to getting a diploma, but they just are no longer in our schools. This is a really, this is something that's not lost on me, it's not lost on our team because we have to weigh what is good for the single student and what is good for the whole. We have to keep our kids safe, we have to keep our teachers safe, we have to keep our schools safe. And you guys, as board members, we've sat in that room, and we've, we've weighed these situations with expulsions and things, and our heart goes out to certain families, but at the end of the day, we have to keep our community safe. And so as we look at our discipline matrix, it has laid out us, it has laid us out a perfect path to consistency. A non-credible threat, we're gonna do, we're gonna do eight to 10 days, and generally, it's gonna be probably just 10 days. We have to be serious about this. We got it, we gotta get some orderly environments back in our schools. If a kid, is there some credibility to that threat, we're gonna, we're gonna recommend for placement. We would look at the severity of that threat, and we would go with the proper placement, and that's how we're gonna kind of manage this situation. We have had some situations where students, it, it's not really a threat. We have had some situations where students, it's not really a threat, it's more of a disruption to the education environment. In those cases, we lean into our discipline matrix to make sure we follow proper protocols with that. But in regards to the threats, I thought I wanted to make sure it was clear, non-credible threats, we're considering threat to educational environment, and we're going to that eight-to-10-day max suspension. Anything that's credible, we're gonna go for an alternative placement, weigh the factors, and do what's best for the community and the child at the same time. Any questions?
I'll wrap this up and we can, I'll take an opportunity to kind of summarize our next steps, then open up any questions that our board may have. As we are looking forward, as Mr. Moore mentioned, that we began weapons detection at Stapley Junior High on September 23rd, which was yesterday. Weapons detection will roll out to begin after fall break at our remaining junior highs, there's a schedule for that. We are developing public service announcements reminding students that all threats are investigated and have consequences. I recorded a public service announcement with Mesa PD this morning that will be going out, not just within Mesa Public Schools, but throughout our city. Also want to remind the board that oftentimes in our communication, we talk about our law enforcement partners. We do have schools in Chandler that the City of Chandler responds through their police department, as well as the Sheriff's Department in our county island. So it's more than just Mesa PD, but that is our go-to, and boy, I don't know what we would do without them. We have care teams to support upset, scared, and anxious staff and students at our schools. And this is definitely a community effort. We have had plenty of families that have reached out and said, please, in your communication, can you remind parents, please check your kids' cell phones? Know what's going on, you cannot, we cannot be absent from this. It does take this entire community to put a stop to it. And to, and asking parents, please talk with your child about the seriousness of these threats. We have children, that we have 12 children right now who have been charged, and that could change their life. So with that, if you'd like to pose any questions, we've got the experts still hanging out in the hallway there, and I feel like we've done a thorough job and lots of information, but should you have questions, we are here for you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Forliss, and thank you, Mr. Moore, and thank you for Sergeant Lines, appreciate your assistance. Thank you, Dr. Mallorwine, for clarifying the discipline procedures. Do any of the board members have any questions or concerns at this time?
I just have a comment, I just want to thank the Mesa PD for working with our district and our security team for working so well, to be able to have them come here and say that we have this wonderful relationship is, it just alleviates any any fears that I have, and it's just such an important part of our education today. So I just have a big thank you for everybody involved.
Thank you, Board Member Walton, anyone else? I think I'm going back to some things and asking our community to come together to stop this. And Sergeant Lines mentioned that speak with your child, reach out to them, and make sure that they report a threat, not repost it. Report, don't repost. Get a screenshot of the post. I think that's an important aspect. And also that whether students are joking or not, this is an exhausting piece on our, this is the exhausting nature of these threats, not just on resources, but time and the emotional health of the folks in our buildings, our students and staff. It's that fear. We have to keep the safe learning environment, and it's up to all of us, parents, educators, community, and kids. We gotta, we gotta, we gotta get a handle on this. Any other questions, concerns? Thank you very much for your expertise, but distinctly the way that you care for our schools and our kids, thank you.
Thank you all.
We now have a discussion item on our district key performance indicators. Dr. Paul Gibbs of Research and Evaluation will be presenting key performance indicators on our strategic goals of igniting a culture of learning and well-being, aligning resources, ensuring equity, and engaging the community. Welcome, Dr. Gibbs.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the board and superintendency, and thank you to Mr. Moore and to his team who works tirelessly to keep us safe. Tonight I'll be sharing with you all a brief update on our district's status on several key performance indicators. So certainly, job number one at Mesa Public Schools is student achievement, and we report on the chief goals throughout the year. Most recently, in July 2024, we discuss graduation rates, proficiency rates on state exams. However, we also continue to track several other indicators related to organizational performance in the areas of align, engage, and ignite that were established a little over two years ago by the board. So the first three goals are in the aligning domain, aligning our resources to support student success. And the first is related to increasing or maintaining the retention of quality employees. We do continue to maintain our employee retention at around 83%. And this is measured as, as of Labor Day at the beginning of the year in September, September 2nd this year. This value does not include temporary employees or substitute teachers, which would not be reasonably maintained from year to year. Our second, our second goal that we are discussing tonight relates to reducing the number of days that a position is left unfilled. We have seen decreases in this indicator over the past three years. Currently, average days a position remains open now is at 61 days across the district, and for schools, it's at 56. So this has been decreasing over time. In the chart, you'll also see the final values from the end of 2022 to 23. The last time we reported on this was May 1st. So these numbers include the the time to the end of the, end of the academic year. Our next goal relates to increasing or maintaining the percent of funds spent in direct service of students. And here you can see that our spending does continue to hold steady, 73%, with the overwhelming majority of district funds being spent on direct services. Moving to, moving to the insurer goal area, you may recall, the district for several years has been in the process of implementing MTSS, or multi-tiered systems of support across the district. And the aim of this is to help to identify students and support students who need support to reach the end of the year successfully, and to create an entire school climate that's conducive to success. For the last two years, school leadership teams have worked through a rubric of MTSS practices at the beginning and end of the year to track the various MTSS components that their school has been implementing. These practices include things like having conversations throughout the year about data, maybe involving creating a library of interventions and deciding when students go into and out of interventions, and and then deciding how to support specific students. As we can see from the total column at the left, schools have reported increasing familiarity with MTSS practices, and they are growing annually in these areas according to their reports with schools on track in this area as well. So next, we'll take a look at some three additional measures drawn from survey responses. So specifically, these are looking at what families say about accessibility of our staff, our engage goal, as well as two ignite goals related to student and staff success, student and staff sense of belonging. So it's important to remember that this is perception data. It's not the same type of measurement as going out with the yardstick and measuring something. Also, we've got to remember that sample sizes make a difference here. So not everybody responds to a survey. We wish that we had greater responses, but people make their decisions. We have, this past spring, about 5% of our families responded. We had 5,000 respondents representing about 57,000 students, so maybe that 9% or so, 8.7% of our representation there. For faculty and staff, for our students, those are both around 50% in overall response rates for the last spring. So it doesn't represent everybody. However, there are, it's interesting how consistently the responses come in, even when you take a small sample. So another thing to note is that these these goals that the board has set for the district do increase year by year, really, really in a very aspirational manner, so up 15% per year in some points. So the school district has been striving in these areas and continues to strive. So turning first to our families' perception of ease of access, we asked families on the parent and guardian survey to let us know whether they think they have easy access to engage or communicate with school or district personnel. On these surveys, in the parent survey included, that we're talking about tonight, we're looking at the percent positive. So the number of people, for instance, who responded to, I agree or strongly agree to a survey question. So we had very similar outcomes two years in a row, with the average positivity of ease of access to district or school personnel coming in at 65% in 2023 and 63 in 24. So certainly, the personnel at family schools are most accessible to them, more so perhaps than district personnel with whom they might have limited interactions. The next, we'll take a look at student sense of belonging, which is drawn from four questions at the elementary level and five from the secondary level. And here we can see that student's sense of belonging overall has held fairly steady over the past three years, past three spring surveys, with 81% of students positive overall in their response to these questions on sense of belonging. We do see a slightly lower sense of belonging with secondary, that is consistent with research on student sense of belonging as they move into adolescence. And so these numbers have held consistent over the years. And then finally, percent positivity, excuse me, percent positivity to employee's sense of belonging. And finally, we asked employees a sense of questions to get at their sense of belonging as well, similar to what we asked for the students. Overall, 82% of our employees agree or strongly agree with these items, indicating that overall our employees are positive and they're disposition toward the district. And with this, I think it would be an appropriate way to wrap up by mentioning, reminding ourselves that perhaps by responses like this, this might be attributable to the fact that MPS was most recently listed as number 14 in Forbes Best Employers by State for Arizona Employees. So certainly, for me, as a, as a two-year employee of the district, I have been, I found that to be true myself.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments by the board at this time? Mrs. Walden?
So I have a comment about, you know, the perception data with the feelings of belonging. So I was researching some other schools, they've done this a lot in Pennsylvania and other states, we're, you know, working on helping students to feel like they belong or employees to feel like they belong. But what we found, what they found, is that, you know, you can't control people's feelings. So there's a lot of money spent on consulting, on research, a lot of time and energy trying to figure out how to make people feel like they belong. And at the end of the day, it's, it's a metric that we can't really be using as a measure of success, because it's constantly changing. And I really, and researching it, saw that, you know, in the data, yeah, this is something that you're just gonna continue to chase your tail about, trying to help people feel like, like they belong. So I think as a, you know, as a metric of our success, feelings don't have a, don't have a place, especially for looking at, you know, continuing to try to measure it and evaluate it. Certainly, I think in your employee surveys, it's, you know, a little bit different, because you do kind of want to gauge if your employees are are happy at work, which again, it's totally subjective. But with students especially, the data shows that as students get older, as they continue to move through adolescence, that their feelings of belonging continues to drop, is just that normal change that they're going through. And it's, it's really hard to continue to, to try to chase after that when it's so common for kids, regardless of their situation, regardless of their socioeconomic background, to feel like they belong as they're going through, you know, a lot of changes in their life as teenagers.
Any other comments? Dr. Strum?
President Hutchinson, members of the board, something to consider as a governing board moving forward, that we debate back and forth all the time in R and E, and are open to the development of board goals, KPIs over the course of the next three to five years. That's, that that kind of speaks a little bit to your comments, Ms. Walden, is if student outcomes are the primary focus of what the governing board desires, how do we honor the work that was done to set these KPIs, know which KPIs to sunset, and substitute back with student outcome KPIs? I was really encouraged by the effort of the governing board to add a CCRI, KPI, sorry, board goal, let me say that better, board goal, to the, to the set of board goals this year. And one of the things we continue to consider is too many goals often then makes what we're measuring not of value. One of my learning experiences from a prior employment place, where I helped a governing board set up over 60 OKRs and KPIs, was 60 was way too many. And so I just, to go along with that thought, how do we consolidate these KPIs and board goals into a common set over the course of the next three to five years? So we can concisely say, not only to our constituents in the public, but also to our internal stakeholders that are working for us, this is what Mesa Public Schools values for outcomes for kids.
And that was with the board goals, I was, we were gonna keep it the same as we did last year. And then we came back and we added, we did add additional goals, because I agree, I think we should keep the goals very simple. And I, that was one of the reasons I voted no on the board goals, is because in the previous meeting, we said, we're gonna leave it the same as last year, that's what our principals want. And then we came back and said, no, we're gonna, we're gonna have have these other goals. And, you know, I feel like part of that is that, yeah, we want to have goals that we can achieve, and, you know, the board academic goals weren't met, so we threw something else in there. But now we're still moving towards a path where it's, we're trying to find something we can achieve, but it's, it's not, it's, it's not gonna be that positive boost we're looking for for student outcomes, where we see that they're really learning the material. So, you know, my concern with with our low proficiency scores is I keep hearing that, well, that just means that they're not going to college. They're not, they're probably not gonna go to college, but we shouldn't be making that choice for our students. We should educate everybody so that they all have the equal opportunity to decide for themselves if they're gonna go to college or if they're gonna go to career. And if we continue to ignore the plummeting academic scores, we are robbing children of being able to make the choice to go to college with the assumption that they're just not interested. I wasn't interested in going to college. I was a junior in high school and I had no interest in going to college. And then I completely changed my mind by the time I was a senior, and I was a first-generation college graduate, I went and got my bachelor's, and then I went to graduate school. And I've, you know, talked about that, I was hired by ASU as a graduate student, I was a teaching and a research assistant, and I loved the academic world, but you never would have thought that from me in high school. So I do feel a little passionate about that, that our lives can take different courses, and we want to keep those options open for everybody. So we know what it takes to, and I say we, meaning the teachers, our talented principals and our talented teachers, and, and I think they know how to create situations where they can really teach students and improve student outcomes. But they don't need the board micromanaging us, micromanaging them. And, you know, if we're gonna set goals based on feelings, it's just not objective, it's not, it's not measurable, it's not something, we can pat ourselves on the back and say, yeah, everybody feels like they belong as we send them off to to their trade school. But it, I still am not seeing the connection how this is gonna be in line with our, our student outcomes. And our student outcomes were academically related. There is no data that says that the sense of belonging improves proficiency. So these are, these are two unrelated things.
And I would just, I think what I would just say is, I continue to emphasize, as we continue to develop our KPI and board goal approach, how we can get to a position where student outcomes are the key indicators across a variety of things that we measure that we measure from college to career to community readiness is going to be something that I think the R and E team's responsibility to bring back to the governing board and propose ideas and let you guys, let the governing board flesh out kind of how you want to measure the district at that point in time is kind of where we want to head over the, over the development cycles, the continuous improvement process over the next couple of years. So we will take that feedback back and we worked in our governing board planning process with some student outcomes goals this year. And in that process, we come back with a CCR goal that is a student outcome goal. And then we need to just continually get better on kind of how these KPIs and board goals marry together to get to a common understanding of what the board's telling the school district we want to accomplish in our system. So I think, I think us hearing that is important to the development process.
And I, and I appreciate that. And I, I still think though, that, you know, us setting the academic goals and saying, okay, we need to improve proficiencies. I think the districts can do that without the board micromanaging it or getting too involved in it. You know, and we're continuing to have discussions with guardrails and, and, and these different goals when it's, you know, we, we know we need to improve proficiency so they can go do it. And I, you know, we had tonight, like parents talking about the Franklin model and other schools adopt it. And that's true. And our most successful schools in the state are using curriculum that has proven to be very effective and it's really not even that expensive. And there's always that question, well, why don't we just use that curriculum? Or how do we give the teachers more time to teach? Let's take work off their plate. Let's stop doing all of this, this social emotional learning, testing and testing people on their, their emotional state and then testing them all the time on, on these other things and give them that time to teach. What can we take out of the classroom? I don't think we need to tell teachers what they need to do to teach because they know. We have defined ways that we can give them more time and power to do the teaching.
Thank you. Any other comments by board members? I would, Dr. Riley? This board voted for four goals, four board goals. This was not, it was discussed. We wanted to reflect our promise to our community that we would make kids college, career and community ready. I think we heard from the community tonight that they expect graduates who can relate with the public, that they, that can collaborate with colleagues, that can empathize with the situation that other human beings might find themselves in the workplace or the, or the, or the customers that they're trying to serve. This board voted for a fourth board goal based on readying students and proving to the community that we are helping them learn skills for career and community. We did not throw something else in there. This was a deliberate goal that this board set. Just testing kids on a certain day is not reflective of what this school district is trying to do for kids. Yes, it's important that kids know, but we also want to make sure we are measuring what they can do. And the CCRI index helps us to determine that. It's not based on feelings and it's not something that we just threw else, that we threw in there. We have a promise to our community and this new board goal is going to help us prove to the community that we are fulfilling our promise. If there's no further discussion, let's go to the next discussion item on the Parent Square School-to-Home Communication Tool. Dr. Forless and I believe Ms. Jen Snyder will be here as well as Ms. Nina Allred. I'm so glad to see you tonight, Nina.
Thank you, Mrs. Hutchinson. Okay. Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Forless and members of superintendency, it is truly a pleasure, pleasure to be here this evening with you. I'm excited to present on a new initiative of the Communications and Engagement Department focused on enhancing school-to-home communications through the implementation of a cutting-edge platform, namely Parent Square. I would like to start my presentation today with our North Star, our promise to our families that every student in Mesa Public Schools is known by name, served by strength and need, and graduates ready for college, career and community. Supporting that promise, of course, is our portrait of a graduate and sustaining that portrait are our five strategic goals, which Dr. Gibbs very nicely summarized for us. The goal I would like to bring your attention to today is engage our community, which I have elaborated on here on this slide for our audience. One of the most important ways in which Mesa Public Schools engages its community is the Mesa Parent Council. The decision to search for and then adopt a unified school-to-home communication app actually comes in response to feedback from said council, which back in March 2023 highlighted the need for a safe and district-approved two-way communication tool. Now, at the time, many of the members of the council had children attending multiple schools and they were overwhelmed by the number of platforms they were asked to download to just keep up with school communications. Well, we heard them loud and clear. Communications and Engagement was called to get involved and soon we were provided with a list of every app or platform that these parents had ever heard of during their time in MPS. In subsequent meetings, the council also came up with a set of criteria to help guide the district in its search for the ideal school-to-home communication app. And so the vetting process started and along the way, we continued identifying features that were most desirable for parents, teachers and administrators. Being such a large school district, the list of considerations kept growing. In this slide, you will see one of the preliminary comparison charts we put together and presented to the council. The original desirable features are highlighted in red. However, to the bottom right, please note the number of asterisks indicating caveats identified for almost every single one of these apps early on into the vetting process. I know they're hard to see, but they're there, I promise you. I'm more than happy to share this slideshow with you. Thanks to the valuable feedback from the Mesa Parent Council, we realized that none of the apps seen in that previous slide had all the capabilities needed to best serve such a diverse community as Mesa Public Schools. So we continued our search and this past summer, we landed on two very promising platforms. After presenting to a series of focus groups and hearing feedback from various school districts, not only in Arizona, but across the nation, it is my pleasure to introduce you to Parent Square. Chad, cue video, please.
Parents are busy and they're getting school information from everywhere. Teacher apps, school texts, email newsletters, district calls, backpack flyers. Too many methods, too many places to look. Schools don't know if they're getting through all this clutter and noise. Who is saying what? If family contact information is current and who's not being reached? Wouldn't it be better if everything was in one place? So you and your families could be sure nothing and no one is missed? It's time to get organized, to get unified. Welcome to Parent Square. Parent Square unifies family communications from the district office to the classroom, all in a single platform. From district-wide alerts to individual parent-teacher messages, Parent Square's communications tools are built to work together, not piece together. Staff have to learn only one system. Parents find everything in one account. It's more than messages. It's also school services that rely on two-way communications, like filling out forms, scheduling conferences, excusing absences and responding to progress reports, all fully integrated. So parents can reply by web or app and miss nothing. Administrators also miss nothing. Usage and participation reports let them know who's not being reached and help improve communications equity. And they can trust contacts and messages will stay private and secure. Schools also increase engagement and family connections with Parent Square's unique ability to verify and flag updates to contact details. Parents can pick preferred ways of being reached and use any of their phone numbers or email addresses to log in. That gives parents control and schools confidence important messages make it through. With Parent Square, schools get a unified communications platform that saves time. They stay in touch with families easily and consistently. Parents have just one login account to find information and communicate with schools and teachers. They're more satisfied and involved. Parent Square, all of your family interactions in one place.
Okay. Thank you, Chad. So that was Parent Square in a nutshell for you. Here's a little bit more information. Parent Square has users in 49 states and it currently serves 15,000 schools and 10.3 million student families. Now, earlier this year, they actually successfully acquired one of the largest platforms that we mentioned in the previous slides, effectively doubling their reach and number of users and of course now being present in all 50 states. Now, one of my favorite things about Parent Square is that the app has many capabilities that go beyond a specific age group. In fact, that was one of the issues that quickly disqualified many of the apps in the previous slide. Many of them are actually currently being used in our district and they were made with the elementary demographic in mind. But what about our secondary students taking classes from multiple teachers? What about our athletes, members of clubs, our EBIT students? That's where the real communication challenge lies. Thanks to Parent Square, we will now be able to unify all school communications from the convenience of a phone app or your desktop. Again, just another small list of features available through Parent Square. But I did want to point out here on this slide, Parent Square's capability for instant two-way translations with 100 plus languages currently available. Families with students in more than one school will also have the capability of merging accounts, making it possible for them to stay connected regardless of their student's schools and ages. Only in one same platform. Additionally, users may change their preferences with just a few clicks and indicate whether they want to receive school notifications immediately or schedule a daily digest. So very personalized app. The video also briefly mentioned Parent Square's ability to identify what we call dirty data and bring it to the school administrator's attention. And similar to a social media platform, it provides engagement analytics at a glance, giving our staff the knowledge they need to be more strategic and intentional, intentional with their messaging. Now, this is not what our dashboard will look like or a school's dashboard, but this is just an example of what it could look like. At the district level, we can keep tabs on our customer's experience. Also, at a quick glance, we can tell which schools are fully making use of the platform and which ones may not be, perhaps because they need additional training. If we start receiving concerns regarding message fatigue, this is something that the dashboard will also help us identify. I would also like to point out that at the district level, select a mini fall break at the 15 schools listed in this slide here. The following rollout plan that we'll describe in the next few slides ensures a structured, thoughtful approach to introducing Parent Square with a focus on robust parent communication and with all other parties involved and making any necessary adjustments before expanding the app's use district-wide. Phase one of our rollout, the pre-launch phase, which takes place one to two months before the initial launch. The main goal here is to raise awareness, build excitement and address any concern from our key audiences. I also like to mention that before we even got to this pre-launch phase, there was a pre-pre-launch phase. And this involved managing all the technical details required to successfully and safely integrate this brand new platform with our existing database. None of this will, would have been possible without the hard work and professionalism of the Information Systems Department. Very grateful for them. Onto our phase two of our rollout. It focuses on staff communications and training. This phase will begin three weeks before launch, namely this week. The objective here is to ensure that all staff members are familiar with how to use Parent Square and have access to the resources that they need. Our target audience includes school administrators and staff. And this is where the Communications and Engagement Department is partnering with the Instructional Design and Technology Team, formerly EdTech, so that we can reach all 15 schools. It's important that staff know where to turn if they need help. And so we'll establish clear points of contact for instructional support. We'll also be promoting our very own Parent Square staff landing, landing page, which will serve as a central hub for information. To clarify, in many instances, those schools here in our previous slide will not be adding a new to item on our teacher's to-do list. Many of the schools already implement other existing platforms. We will just be shifting their attention by providing them a safe and intuitive tool that has been district-approved. Lastly, in this phase, we'll be giving special attention to the largest and only high school in this pilot program, Mesa High. Almost done, I promise. Phase 3A focuses on our launch communication during the week of October 15th. The main objective of this phase is to officially announce the launch of Parent Square and encourages use across those 15 school communities. Shortly after phase 3A, we move on to phase 3B, in which we start preparing Mesa High for the implementation of Student Square among its student population. Student Square is a very similar platform to Parent Square with the exception that we will not be contacting students directly to their personal phone numbers. And I would like to note that I'm a parent at Mesa High myself. So I'm very much looking forward to experiencing the pilot at the district, parent and student level. The final phases of this initial rollout plan include a focus on collecting data from the pilot schools through those dashboards that you've seen previously, analyzing it thoroughly, reporting our findings to their, findings to their respective areas and making any necessary adjustments or improvements to the app's usage. At this point, we'll also review whether there's potential for the pilot program to expand organically beyond those initial schools. Finally, we're looking at, we're looking ahead to phase six, the full district-wide launch, which is planned for summer 2025. And basically that is all the information I have for you today. I, we do have the pleasure of having here with us today, Mr. Chris Prince, Director of Sales from Parent Square. And we're ready to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Nina, for that very complete report. Appreciate that very much. Do any of the board members have any questions or concerns? Mrs. Walden?
So how does the app work in a situation where there's a Freedom of Information Act request? A FOIA?
Thanks for having me, by the way. And by the way, Mrs. Allred has done about as thorough a job as, as I have ever experienced. I've been in this business for 15 years. I work with a lot of districts in Arizona, many districts all over the, the country. She is a fierce protector of this district. You, you asked about a FOIA request. Currently, if there is a FOIA request, the district would have access to all messages over the last one year. However, we hold on to them for seven years. And if there is a FOIA request for a communication that has taken place prior to that one year, then it can reach out to our support team and we'll be able to give you access to it.
That was, that was my other question too, is if stuff gets deleted, you know, if it was forensically recoverable. But you said you have it for seven years?
We do.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Davis?
What, what are we looking at cost-wise on this?
Annual license is $4.05 a student. That's the lowest of any district in the state of Arizona.
I do a follow-up to that?
Yes, please, Dr. Riley.
What's the offsetting savings? If you're replacing a lot of other apps with this, is there at all so an offsetting savings that the board should be aware of?
Money-wise, we've had, I understand what you're asking. So we currently have schools utilizing other free apps. So we're not saving money, but we, what we are doing is protecting our student data, our parent information. And we're also ensuring that information provided on the app is accurate. So just to quickly illustrate that, I have, like I mentioned before, I have a son attending Mesa High School, but he first attending, attended Hale Elementary. At the time, Hale was a Class Dojo school. I'm still getting messages from Class Dojo. So that's the cost of- So that's the cost of having a, a, a software that is not fully integrated with a student database. And so this way, we'll make sure that this database is updated nightly.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I have another question. So we have some people piloting it at 14 schools. Is, are they piloting it for free then, since the board hasn't voted on a cost or contract?
This has already been purchased. This is under the threshold that comes to the governing board. So this has already been purchased. This is an update on information on how this is going to be implemented. This has been a two-year process of discovery as Mrs. Allred did a beautiful job of doing. And I will say that Mrs. Davis served on our Mesa Parent Council at the very beginning of all of this to watch this cycle through. We have a significant risk to our data through these current free apps. And this is an investment in part of our security plan for student data.
So what's, what's the threshold? What's the dollar amount? Can you remind me what the dollar amount is for the threshold?
$300,000 comes to the board.
But this is an annual contract. This would be an annual contract, not like a one-time thing. The threshold say less than $300,000 every, every year? It doesn't need board approval?
Our procurement, do you want to speak to that a bit, Scott, around the approvals of different contracts and the threshold amount?
The answer is yes. The amount, it is an annualized amount every year.
So, Mr. Wing?
This is just information for us, though. So we're really not going to vote on this at any point?
Yeah, this is a discussion item to let you know that this is being rolled out across Mesa Public Schools in response to parents' requests for two-way communication and ensuring data privacy.
Mr. Wing, would you like to add?
Yeah, Madam President, governing board. I wasn't really involved, but my HR hat on, the State Board of Education did approve guidance on staff communicating with students. And we implemented that in our policies. Effective July 1, the governing board approved it. And one fear is the lack of control of communication between staff and students. We need to provide a tool that protects both students and staff. And so not being involved in this, I appreciate not just the communication to parents, but also to have some things in place where we're following and adhering to our policies and to state guidelines.
Thank you for that clarification and that information. Any other information or questions that folks would have? Okay. Seeing, seeing none, I appreciate the, the presentation. I appreciate you staying to the end of the meeting, sir. And with the end of the discussion item, I do believe that a motion to adjourn the meeting is in order. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Mrs. Sears has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis has seconded. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Kirby, would you please take our vote?
Ms. Sears votes in the affirmative.
With a vote of 5-0, the board has adjourned the meeting. Thank you all for attending tonight.